Sorry, I was getting myself organized here. Okay, so I'm gonna call our meeting to order. Welcome this evening to our meeting. And our roll call will be by our city clerk Kathy Valdez.
The records should reflect that all members are present.
Tonight, we're gonna have our Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all rise and join us. Deputy Mayor Franklin is going to lead it.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty of our land for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. I'd like to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow for public input and to facilitate city business without disruption of our meeting. Applause is appropriate for the items listed on the presentation portion of the agenda only. Attendees should remain seated during the meeting, and persons needing to stand are requested to step outside the city council chambers where video and audio of the meeting are playing. This is also listed on our agenda cover sheet. And students, do I have any students here for ancient Buena Vista? Anybody? Yeah, a few of them here, okay. Students wishing to receive credit for attending this evening's meetings must stay for a minimum of one hour. However, we ask that you stay for the completion of an item rather than leaving in the middle of a discussion. When you're ready to leave, you can ask one of the sheriff deputies or a staff member in the back of the room to sign your paper. To speak for three minutes on an item on the agenda, for if you want to address the council, please fill out a speaker slip with the number of the item that you want to speak on and give it to our clerk, city clerk secretary. And speaker slips are available just outside of the city council chambers, on the table out there. We have two presentations this evening, so I'd like to invite my council down and like to...
(Inaudible)
Oh, I forgot that. Where is it? Approve of the agenda, city manager, please approve our agenda.
Mayor, there are no changes this evening to the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, I was moving on there. Okay, so now, presentations. I have two presentations this evening, or we do. So I'd like to invite Public Works Supervisor George Solano to the podium to receive a proclamation declaring October 29th, 2019 to be George Solano Day in the city of Vista. Okay. You want your family to join you up here? Where's your family?
Sure.
Come on up, come on up. Come on, let's do this all together.[196.23][196.23](Applause) Fantastic. Yay, okay, we have a proclamation here. I'm gonna read the proclamation. George is the first employee in Vista to get 40 years of service. And on top of that, he's a great guy. George Solano is retiring on October 29th, 2019 after 40 years of dedicated service to the city of Vista. George was hired on October 29th, 1979 as a maintenance worker in the Public Works Department. In July 1983, he was promoted to Maintenance Lead Worker, and he was reclassified to Wastewater Supervisor in July 1984, and reclassified again to Wastewater Foreman in January 1986. In July 1994, he was promoted to Wastewater Division Supervisor, and in March 2009, George transferred to his current position as the Fleet Fire Maintenance Division Supervisor. As George progressed through the ranks of the Vista Public Works Department, he had the opportunity to work on a variety of projects throughout the community. As early as 1980, he was being recognized by city leadership for his outstanding performance and work ethic. As he promoted up the chain, George continued to successfully perform maintenance and emergency work on both public and private sewer lines, and was always willing to lend a hand to ensure that the city's residents and businesses received excellent service. Whereas George also served for many years as the Public Works Department's safety coordinator, overseeing all aspects of the department's safety, training, and compliance program. Through his dedication and technical expertise, the Public Works Department has maintained a model compliance program. Whereas after the terrorist attacks of September 11th, 2001, George was part of one of the first teams, Urban Search and Rescue California Task Force Eight, that traveled from San Diego to New York City to assist in the rescue efforts at the World Trade Center. George coordinated the removal of tons of debris left behind in the wake of the terrorist attacks. And following the Task Force Eight's return to San Diego, George received commendation by the city of San Diego's Fire Chief Jeff Bowman for serving as a member of the task force, which was selected to receive the Unit Exceptional Performance Citation, an award established to recognize heroic, meritorious, or outstanding actions. And whereas during the Great Recession, George was called upon to take a new role in the city, transferring from the Wastewater Division to the Fleet Fire Maintenance Division, George took on this new role with enthusiasm and positivity, transforming the division into an efficient, effective, and internal service provider that all city employees can count on. Whereas while performing the duties as a Fleet Fire Supervisor, George worked closely with the Vista's fire department to ensure the fire apparatus and emergency vehicle fleet was ready to meet the demands of the department. In addition to ensuring the readiness of frontline and reserve vehicles, George ensured his technicians were credentialed as certified fire mechanics, which qualified them to deploy in the support of wildland firefighting efforts across the state. And in addition to his formal duties, George has also taken on many informal roles as well. George has served as a mentor for personnel, providing support and guidance to many of the people under his purview, and taking great pride as they progressed in their careers. Admired by those around him, his impact on the public works employees have been significant over the last four decades. And whereas George has been recognized as a finalist for the city's Manager of the Year Award on six occasions, additionally, he has received numerous letters of appreciation for assisting with a variety of projects, such as his outstanding instructional classes, exceptional storm drain replacements, leadership organizing in public works holiday food drives, and clearing the blocked sewer laterals throughout the city. George and his sewer camera crew reliably resolved many system emergencies to the satisfaction of residents. One of the most memorable letters of appreciation came in 1998, after George and his crew retrieved a wedding ring that had been flushed down a toilet.[445.81][445.81](Laughter) Yay.[447.81][447.81](Applause) George Solano's professionalism, integrity, and commitment to public service is unmatched. He has faithfully served the city of Vista, its residents and businesses for the past 40 years, and his commitment to the city, the community, and his colleagues is irreplaceable, and he will be sorely missed by all. So therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council offer their sincere appreciation to George Solano for his dedication and 40 years of service to the city of Vista, and hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 29th, as George R. Solano Day in the city of Vista.
I just want to say thank you to everybody in the city of Vista, city council, all my colleagues, friends, brothers and sisters in the fire department, to all the special team members that I got to work with over the last few years and throughout all of the years. There are some special people in the city that I've gotten very close to in a working relationship, that I couldn't have done all of this or any of this without all their support. Moreover than that, my wife Laura, and my former wife Caroline, the kid's mom, and to my family here for coming and supporting me today. This is a very, very small group of my family, by the way. And to all of my, rest of my family and friends out there within my group of people that I grew up with and live with, for allowing me the opportunity to work for this fine agency for 40 years. I also want to say thank you.
Patrick.
And Ally. Good support mechanism. And the first time I went to a budget, I wore black, because I wanted to demonstrate I could keep the budget in the black. They moved the budget meeting to October, so I wear pink in October, so I had to wear a pink tie, but continued to wear my black. And Patrick and Ally and Tony Weenie made it really fun. I was scared, I was really nervous that time. There was some real good business that was done, but at the same time, Patrick, Ally, and Tony really made it fun to learn how to do that process, and from that, I really am thankful to them. And I thank you all for the city and my family. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.[630.23][630.23](Applause)
Picture here. Okay.
Squeeze it.
(Laughter) (Inaudible) Yay.[637.23][637.23](Applause) Thanks, George. Okay, so that takes us to our second presentation here this evening. So that's, we're gonna do the Vista Leadership Academy. It's the 21st Vista Leadership Academy's graduating class tonight, and so we're going to call them all up by name, and then we're gonna have a group picture taken here. So they've been going for, how many weeks? Like, eight or 10 weeks, and they've had different classes every week, and so we're celebrating their graduation tonight. So, this academy provides insight to Vista residents on the city's operations and its many responsibilities and functions. Our first academy, conducted in 2007, was an overwhelming success, and every leadership academy has grown since then. So we do, I think we do two of them a year? Who's here, can you tell me? Is two correct? Two of them a year. So if some of you haven't taken that, it's really an interesting course, and it tells you all about the city, all the different things that the city does. So congratulations to the Fall 2019 participants, and I'm gonna have them come up there as I call their name, and then remain standing up here so we can take our group photo. So we'll start out with Linda Case. Linda here?[703.12][703.12](Applause) See Linda? So how about Jennifer Clark?
Hey.
Hey, come on, Jennifer.[710.12][710.12](Applause) Ed Culbertson, is Ed here? Where's Ed? Yeah, that's right.[717.51][717.51](Applause) Leila Dooley?[720.00][720.00](Applause) Pilar Good?[723.93][723.93](Applause) Cindy Hawks?[728.87][728.87](Applause) Jordan Hitchens? Where's Jordan?[735.87][735.87](Applause) Buddy McCammy?[738.00][738.00](Applause) Mads Nusgaard? Where's Mads?[745.12][745.12](Applause) Claudia Panian?[748.12][748.12](Applause) Jennifer Rawlings?[753.87][753.87](Applause) Len Reicher? Adam Richard? Catherine Stephan? Catherine Stephan? She here? Brett Stirk? Mary Tromper Ermas? Jan Wilson? And Lisa Winterstein? Okay, we're going to, we have to get together more.
(Inaudible)
Yeah, come on, gather in here, guys. All people in the back.
Let me see, sure people in the back.
We have three of us. You're the graduates, you can put the front. Here we go. Everybody, are we, can you get us all in? Yes?
How are you looking? Good? All right.
I like the way you think.
You're smiling.
Oh, wait, one more. Like this. With the B.
Vista.
For Vista.
One more back here.
Hey, Jordan's got it.
You gotta. Everything doing it now.
We all set? All right. Yay.[838.23][838.23](Applause)
Madam Mayor, while the council chambers are clearing, I had to tell George that I was five months old when he started working for the city of Vista. So, what an honor for our community and our organization to have somebody give that many years of their life. And I know all of us on the council attend the Years of Service Awards, and we have so many who give 30, and 20, and 10 years, and more, but we really are honored to have folks spend their entire life here with our organization. It's a tremendous honor for us.
I agree. Very nice. So with that, now, we have to settle down and go back to business here. So the next thing is our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar, and any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar, and we have 10 consent items this evening. So, do I have any that are removed by the public? No. Anything removed by the, oh, Councilmember Contreras?
Yes, I would like to remove C6, please.
C6. And would you make a motion for the balance, then?
Sure. I make a motion to proceed with the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, so please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously, so with that, we will go to item C6, which are unclaimed trust deposits.
Would you like a report, or?
Sure, you know what? I would like a report, and then I do have some questions and suggestions that I'd like to open up to discussion with my colleagues. But I would like to hear the report first. Thank you.
We have our community development director, John Conley, here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is unclaimed trust deposits. These are deposits that we take for new development in trust for certain public improvements that are done. Typically, the completion of this process, when the public improvements are all in and approved, we return this money back to the developer. These are unclaimed deposits where the developers not come back, and we've not been able to locate the individuals or companies that provided the deposits. And so there's about $28,000 roughly in unclaimed deposits that we're requesting be put towards street projects and our capital projects budget. And I'm available for any questions, as well as Mr. Mayor, our city engineer.
Thank you so much. You know, one of the things that's been happening for quite a long time here in our city, and we were reminded unfortunately, I believe, three times this month, is, you know, we don't, we're trying our best to create good public safety in, when it comes to infrastructure, right? When we're looking at sidewalks, when we're looking at, you know, how pedestrians get around, how cyclists get around. I do see this opportunity of $28,272.05 as a really big opportunity for us to really hone in on certain areas in the city where we have a lot of collisions that happen. I would love to have a discussion with my colleagues to get a little bit more specific with how we're going to utilize the $28,272.05. It's not a ton of money, but you know, there are different intersections where perhaps we can change some of the timing on the signals, different areas where maybe we could do a bulbout of the curb. So I would like to see these funds not just go into the CIP budget, but also to be a little bit more specific, for it to go to areas where we have the highest amount of collisions that have happened historically. So, I don't know if you all want to weigh in on that. I'm more than happy to make a motion, but I would like to have a little bit of discussion on what I've proposed.
I don't know, I just was reading this, and it says, right now, it goes into the city's capital project budget for street rehabilitation, construction, overlay, so it would, seems like it's going toward that anyway. So, and I think they prioritize the stuff, the street things, so I would think that maybe intersections would be in that, you know, that, I don't know.
Perhaps we could get a little bit more clarification from staff as to if this would go to a high priority like that first, or if that's something that the council needs to provide direction in order for that to occur?
We were proposing to use it in our streets overlay budget. That's our largest budget unit. It just applies, you know, citywide for our overlay that we do every other year, so we'd be happy to put it wherever the council wants us to put it, if you want to provide any specific direction.
So we would need to provide specific direction if we wanted to allocate these funds specifically for a public safety aspect when it comes to looking at collision-dense areas? Is that correct?
Correct.
So...
I think it's only $28,000. That's not gonna do a whole lot for...
You know, something's better than nothing.
Well, it is going, it's going towards some things, you know, but I'm just thinking, in order to do some big project, it wouldn't, it would help with, you know, a project. Anyway, what do you got to say? Amanda, Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate you bringing that up, especially in light of some of the recent events that have happened. One, I think that we already have allocated money for mitigating those particular instances, and for those intersections and crosswalks. So we are already working on those that we've identified as high priority. And I think I would still like to see this go into the street overlay and the street rehabilitation, construction, and overlay project, because that is something that we want to work more on in that budget. But I know, I know, we all know, the council, that we have mitigated some of the issues that caused those problems, and we're in the process of fixing those and prioritizing those. So I think we are already doing what you're asking us to do with this particular money. So, I would still like to see it go to where we're recommending it go.
So do you want to make a motion, or something?
I think Karina made a motion.
So, you know, I would still like to continue. So yes, I make a motion that we specify that the $28,272.05 still go to the capital project budget, but for it to be focused on areas throughout the city. And perhaps we can only do one area, but areas where there historically have been a lot of collisions and continue, we continue to witness collisions.
So, Mayor, we have a lot of different capital projects that you could choose from, but my recommendation would be, we have a mobility plan that we're looking at that's focused on specific pedestrian safety issues, sidewalks, crossings, signals, et cetera. We could put it into that budget that would go, what I think is toward Councilwoman Contreras' recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Green?
So my question, I have a few questions, actually, because I'm fully aware of the issues as well with pedestrians, and I understand the need to put more money towards safety. I'm assuming our traffic engineer has been pretty on top of like the high-density intersections where we've had the most problems? I'm sure there's some type of study on that. How much money is currently allocated for pedestrian improvements right now?
Currently, we've used up the last year's allocation, and we're waiting for another half million dollars to come back in for next year for sidewalks along Gannett Drive. So currently, we don't have an existing balance. We've used it.
But we do have money that we allocate towards pedestrian improvements and sidewalk repair and things like that through both engineering and public works, but the bulk of our money we're waiting on.
Okay. And, you know, I'm all about public safety. I mean, public safety, infrastructure, business development, three main jobs of our council, but I really feel like we have a pretty good handle on our, you know, pedestrian safety and walkability and things like that. I don't know what type of improvements this money would go to, and maybe as staff, you could tell me, hey, $28,000 could go towards, what does that do? I mean, the study to determine which intersection to spend the money on, I would think, would almost cost more than $28,000. So I'm wondering if it's better to contribute it to a bigger pot, to be able to make a bigger dent, and then as we determine the exact needs and what those costs are, needs-based, then we allocate money towards a particular change.
One of the other things, in addition to what Mr. Conley made a suggestion, if the council wanted to go down this route, is we are gonna look at, look at the signal at North Santa Fe in California, and making modifications so that the left turn doesn't have to yield to pedestrians, and the pedestrians can do straight through on the crosswalk. So that is one area that if we wanted to allocate this money to, if the council was receptive to that, you could make improvements to that intersection and that signal, which would...
Because are we waiting on money to make that improvement?
No, we're gonna have to look at what money we have in the capital budget and move things around, but if that's something that the council wanted to do, that's a solution as well, in addition to what Mr. Conley had mentioned earlier.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what the cost was to take a left-hand turn out while pedestrians are in the intersection. I mean, if this money could be used to change that particular light, and we could do it tomorrow, that'd be fantastic. I mean, if we're really waiting on money to make that improvement at that intersection, which, North Santa Fe in California, we've had multiple pedestrian involved, I mean, I would be...
I would say to Councilwoman Contreras that, you know, I'm not trying to affect her motion or anything, but if that's something you're looking to, and the council wants to do from a pedestrian-related standpoint, that is something that we could allocate that money to, towards making those signalized improvements.
I think if there's a majority of the council that would, you know, go down that route, I would love to amend my motion to go specifically to that intersection in that case. Like I said, $28,000, it's not that a ton of money, but if we're gonna have to be shuffling money around anyways, we might as well just allocate it right now to the specific fund to initiate some change a little bit faster.
Oh, Deputy Mayor Franklin?
You know, I was just gonna suggest, since pedestrian safety is top of mind because of recent events, maybe instead of this particular item, we want to have a more full conversation about the subject, and maybe what we want to do is ask staff to bring back an item at a future date, to talk about what are the top of our list of pedestrian safety improvements that would tend to reduce vehicular pedestrian collisions, and bring that back to us with a discussion of top projects, and as well as identified sources of funding for those projects.
Early in the year, you know, we had the workshop or the discussion item on traffic, traffic safety, and maybe Mr. Conley or Mr. Meyer want to talk about the ATP grant that we were awarded for $4 million that are gonna be the bulk of our focus in terms of pedestrian safety on North Santa Fe.
Well, if, and we're gonna have that conversation around March?
Well, we had that conversation at the last council meeting that we had, we discussed traffic, so we did go over not just signalized intersections, but traffic safety and pedestrian safety. But we can have, we can have that conversation again.
We're spending a lot of time on the $28,000, which was about the cost of the last stop sign that we put in there at Chaperal and Lupine after we paid $20,000 for the...
Curtain ramps.
For the, not for the ADA accessible, for the newly revised ADA accessible, because the old ones were, used to be ADA, and then they changed the, and then we had to pour new concrete, it cost another 20 grand, so the $28,000 is a lot. So maybe we should, what we should really do is devote a real conversation to this subject rather than just the 28. What do you think?
Well, I think we should have a conversation about it, for sure. However, we have the opportunity in front of us right now to allocate $28,272.05, and I didn't think it was gonna be such a drawn-out conversation. However, I stand by my motion, and I think that we should just show the public at this point that, you know, we're already starting on this, because it is a serious issue, and it's not just, you know, along North Santa Fe, there are other areas, and I think that's where a full-body discussion is warranted. However, I do see an opportunity here with funds that, you know, we weren't expecting to have. I think we could, we could do something good right now. So I stand by my motion, and if, you know, you want to have some more discussion...
we were awarded for $4 million that are going to be the bulk of our focus in terms of pedestrian safety on North Santa Fe.
Well, if, and we're going to have that conversation around March?
Well, we had that conversation at the last council meeting that we had, we discussed traffic, so we did go over not just signalized intersections, but traffic safety and pedestrian safety. But, we can have, we can have that conversation again.
We're spending a lot of time on the $28,000, which was about the cost of the last stop sign that we put in there at Chaparral and Lupine after we paid $20,000 for the...
Curve ramps.
For the, not for the ADA accessible, for the newly revised ADA accessible, because the old ones were, used to be ADA, and then they changed the, and then we had to pour new concrete, it cost another 20 grand, so the $28,000 is a lot. So, maybe we should, what we should really do is devote a real conversation to this subject rather than just the 28, what do you think?
Well, I think we should have a conversation about it, for sure. However, we have the opportunity in front of us right now to allocate $28,272.05, and I didn't think it was going to be such a drawn-out conversation. However, I stand by my motion, and I think that we should just show the public at this point that, you know, we're already starting on this, because it is a serious issue, and it's not just, you know, in, along North Santa Fe, there are other areas, and I think that's where a full-body discussion is warranted. However, I do see an opportunity here with funds that, you know, we weren't expecting to have. I think we could, we could do something good right now. So, I stand by my motion, and if, you know, you want to have some more discussion, we can, but I think it's just the right thing to do at this time.
I would ask the, is it, did you say 4 million or 6 million that we're getting for that area?
$4 million.
For 4 million, so is, would this be part of the $4 million already, is that already programmed into that?
Let Mr. Conley answer that.
No, it's just some timing changes that we need to make, it's not a significant improvement.
Okay, I'll second your motion. Okay, and Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the question that I had or the comment I had is already made, and the question I had was already answered, but we have, I don't want the people of the city of Vista, I don't want our community to think that we're not aware of what happened this past week, and that we're not doing anything about it, but because we are. We have taken it very seriously, we've looked at the issue with the pedestrian accidents getting run over in the crosswalk. So, we take that very, very seriously, and we have already identified what we can do to mitigate those, and we are finding the money for that, and we've already, we'll be getting our award, we have a budget for these things. So, I don't want people to think that we're not doing anything, and that if we don't do this, that we're still not doing anything, because we are, and community safety is paramount to all of us, I believe. As has been mentioned, we already have our priority list, and this, these intersections and areas are on that list. We have money going for it. I don't have a particular, I mean, I'm not particularly opposed, it's $26,000, as my colleague pointed out, that was the cost of a stop sign. What we can do to mitigate these areas, I think we should, but I also know that the final word on the cause of a couple of these hasn't been given to us yet, so I don't want us to put money into something if we already have mitigated site issues and crosswalk issues and signage and lines and reflection and things like that. So, I'm not opposed particularly to it, but I think there's more, more to it than we, than is before us right now regarding the particular incidents that my colleague has brought up, but pedestrian safety is paramount, so we're already doing it, there's always more that we can do.
Deputy Mayor.
You know, I guess I was just concerned that the community might mistake that this was the extent of our interest in the subject. It's, it's kind of a symbolic thing, my, again, my concern is that it's just such a small thing that somebody might feel that this was our reaction to this incident, and I, that's why I was thinking if we had a more full conversation about the subject, it would maybe do more justice to the, to the issue. So, I'm certainly not opposed to allocating these funds, I just don't want the community to mistake the degree to which we're interested in this subject.
Agreed.
Councilmember Green.
Yeah, that was kind of my thing as well, is this is just the beginning of the pedestrian improvements throughout our town. We're not just throwing $28,000 at it, but I do think, and I know that with our city manager's conversation and our council's conversations with, you know, school district employees and board members and things, that a left, having a car in a pedestrian walkway is not a good idea. So, being able to eliminate the car going through the pedestrian walkway by timing changes on our end, that's great. The question I had for you is, if we, like bias doing this right now, it does speed up the process, right? If we say we want to allocate these funds towards that intersection, changing those, is it done quicker since we've, now we found the money and we've allocated it for it? What are the timeframe for the changes, I guess is my question?
The wheels are already turning to make that improvement happen, so...
This just shows we can pay for it.
The money replaces money that we would otherwise spend on it, so it's going to happen quickly either way. As far as the exact timing, our traffic engineer isn't here, but I'm just going to guess, within the next couple of weeks, they'll have that installed.
Okay, and then it would free up additional money for, inevitably, we might be transferring money back to our overlay project in the end, but this at least says, hey, this is a priority for us, let's get this intersection, and then let's keep working on the pedestrian problem. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion in a second, so you cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. That takes us on to our discussion items. We have two discussion items this evening. Our first one, D1, is a strategic plan to address homelessness, and our Assistant City Manager, Ally Zimmerman, will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. We're back before you again to talk through some of the items related to the strategic plan to address homelessness that we're in the middle of drafting. This is the second of three discussion items ahead of a draft strategic plan that will come back to you in December. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Housing Program Manager, Amanda Lee, who's going to lead this discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The item before you tonight is to discuss quality of life, education, and outreach, and legislative advocacy. During the presentation, staff will be requesting direction on strategies to include in the homelessness strategic plan. Before we discuss the strategies, I want to quickly review the process up to today. In March 2018, the City Council identified a need to develop a strategic plan to address homelessness. Following the goal-setting meeting, staff immediately recognized the importance of creating a plan that was data-driven, based on best practices, and utilizes all available resources. To accomplish this, staff released a request for proposal and selected HG Consulting to assist with the development of the plan. At the June 4th City Council Workshop, staff and the consultants provided an overview of potential outcomes and strategies for the strategic plan's big-picture focus. Based on that discussion, the City Council directed staff to include the following outcomes in the strategic plan: prevent homelessness, improve quality of life, enhance community outreach and education, which will be discussed tonight, and reduce homelessness, which will be discussed on the November 12th City Council meeting. Quality of life is subjective, but generally includes measures of physical, mental, and social health, occupation, housing, and the ability to participate and/or enjoy life events. Those who are experiencing homelessness have a diminished quality of life, but it is also important to acknowledge that homelessness affects the quality of life for others in the community by raising concerns related to health, sanitation, and safety. On June 4th, we discussed potential strategies to improve the overall quality of life for all in the community. During the meeting, the City Council requested further information on encampment cleanup and housing placement, safe parking with case management services, historic downtown outreach program, and to evaluate existing city ordinances. Staff will evaluate ordinances after receiving direction from City Council during tonight's legislative advocacy section. Julie Dubic from HG Consulting is with us tonight and will provide you additional information on strategies concerning quality of life, provide an overview on how the city attends to engage in education and outreach, and request your direction on new or revised legislation goals that you would like to be included in the legislative advocacy section of the strategic plan.
We're going to shift to the next slide, hopefully, and talk about encampment cleanup and housing placement. And as you can see from the slide, the city does a lot of work in cleaning encampments, especially those in sensitive habitats and areas. The regional task force has also directed work toward encampment cleanups and has issued a second draft of a policy statement that would impact the whole region, the city of San Diego and all of North County, and it's in draft form circulating. What it says, and I think what is generally known, is because there is a lack of housing availability at many levels, the challenge to encampment is that there isn't a place, often there is not a place, to move those removed from an encampment into a sheltered position. But Vista is doing a lot of work, a lot of good work, in maintaining public safety and the like in moving encampments. The challenge has been what happens once they're moved. So, at this point, unless you have further questions on encampment cleanup, details in terms of tonnage and the like, we have. The staff is not recommending implementation of a specific encampment cleanup program at this time because of the challenge in the housing and funding areas, but that we re-continue what Vista has been doing, which is prioritizing encampment cleanup where there's a public water, wastewater threat and the like, which they are doing quite a bit of now. I see a puzzled look on your face.
Deputy Mayor, do you want to ask her now, or do you want to wait till the end of the, see your buttons pushed?
Well, I could wait.
Would you rather finish everything, or do you want to take questions in the middle?
I'd rather do it now, do you?
Yeah, we'd like to discuss each of the sections as they were broken out in the agenda report, and get some direction, and then move on to the next section. So, if your question is relative to this, and we'd prefer...
Directly related to the issue of encampment cleanup, I think I heard you say you're not going to recommend any additional encampment cleanup?
We're not going to recommend a whole new program because of separate cost and because the real problem with a whole new program is that there isn't, and it's not just a Vista problem by any means, there isn't a place to move people, remove from the encampment. And without that, you will continue to clean up encampments, which you are doing now, but we won't solve the problem without a place to put people.
Mm-hmm.
And that's true around the county and the city, it's not isolated to Vista by any means.
I believe the city of San Diego changed its ordinances to a three-hour window so that they could clean up encampments. I think...
I believe that was an emergency ordinance related to the hepatitis crisis that we were going through last year, and they were able to increase the urgency of some of those removals related to sanitation. But, generally speaking, the 72-hour notice typically holds, and I defer to our legal counsel on that to confirm.
Well, the issue is, for those citizens who aren't aware of it, we have, behind Costco alone, we have 23 acres of environmental preserve, it's supposed to be pristine wilderness, and we have dozens of people camped out down there. Thank you to the COPS deputies who have given a frightening tour to several of us on the council, and commend that to the rest of my colleagues, if you haven't yet done it. It looks like a landfill down there, stacks of bottles filled with urine. I understand that the sheriff's human resources department just advised that our folks couldn't go down there anymore without Tyvek suits, is that what they're telling you? I mean, we've got that kind of a health problem, so to not talk about additional cleanup efforts. Cleanup efforts are important, not only to protect the environment, and, you know, go down there, we've got, you know, a creek that's, you know, supposed to be flowing with clean water, there's so much garbage in there, and you look and you go, how can this be the community that we live in, and we allow the creek to be completely loaded with garbage? It's totally unacceptable. Let's talk about this issue of there's no place for people to go. I disagree entirely with your assessment that there's nowhere for them to go because housing prices are too high. I think that's a false argument, that's a straw man argument. We get reports from the San Diego Association of Governments that tell us that 5% of the homeless in these encampments are addicted to meth and heroin. Our sheriff's deputies will tell you it's 95%. It is 95%. If we're not going to come out and speak truth, which is the reason I wanted to talk about this issue, and talk about the fact that these people are not in limited encampments because they can't afford to get a roommate and find housing, they're there because they're addicted to methamphetamine and heroin, and because they've spent their rent money on heroin. And until we help them to address their addiction to heroin and methamphetamine, they're not going to make decisions that are going to enable them to get into housing, no matter what the cost of it is. This is the advocacy part of this that I'm so passionate about. So, I don't, you know, when I hear somebody say that the high cost of housing is the reason, no, it's not. Heroin and methamphetamine are the reason, and I want, in this conversation, to inject truth, and I'm willing to invite as much controversy as I need, because I want people talking about this issue. I'm going to get angry about it, I'm going to get indignant, and I'm going to get intolerant of it. And I want everyone listening to me to get intolerant and to get indignant and get angry at somebody about this. We walk past it, we have human beings, our brothers, our cousins, our uncles, our daughters, our sisters, our mothers are dying in the most deplorable of circumstances, and we walk past it and we do nothing. City, state of Rhode Island goes out and arrests people, that conservative bastion of republicanism, Rhode Island, that's a joke, they're not exactly a right-leaning place, but they go out and they incarcerate you. They take you out of the ditch where your body is covered with festering sores and where you live in a pile of your own feces and your own bottles of urine, and they take you to a place where you have three nutritious meals a day, you get a clean shower every day, you got a warm bed to lay in, you got somebody who's helping you with your mental illness, somebody who's helping you with your physical medical needs, you're getting those wraparound services, and you're being separated from your addiction to heroin or methamphetamine through a medical detox program. And then those individuals, after about 180 days, if you're not familiar with this, you need to watch Seattle is Dying, go to YouTube and watch it, it's an important hour of your life to see this. We need to speak up, we need to advocate for medical supervised detox, we need to serve the drug-addicted community, we need to serve the mentally ill. If you're schizophrenic and you're allowed to live in a ravine, in a tent, that is prima facie evidence of an immoral society, because we don't allow kids to live in tents behind Costco, nor should we allow somebody whose mental faculties don't enable them to make good decisions about their own safety and welfare. We must step in, we must step up, we must speak out against this problem. Drug addiction is the number-one problem facing the chronically homeless, and we've got to get really upset about it, and we've got to talk about it in these terms, otherwise we will make no progress in genuinely solving this problem. So, I'm sorry to be so impassioned, I'm not sorry, actually, but I'm sorry to take up so much time, and I don't mean to be disagreeable, but I have to disagree with this idea that it's the high cost of housing. I had roommates, you know, there's places that are affordable if you, if you have a job, and let me tell you, I'm an employer, I am trying, I actively have job announcements up right now, and I cannot hire people because of the lack of good people to work, because they're all employed, or historically low unemployment. There are jobs for people that want them. That doesn't mean that everybody's capable of working, and I understand that. Certainly, somebody will mischaracterize my words and say that I forgot about somebody who can't work. I don't forget about those people, we need to help those people. We need to lift them up like they are our children, like they are our brothers and our mothers, and we need to care about them, but pretending that this is not the affliction is not caring about those people. Giving voice to the truth, that's caring, and that's what I have to say right now.
And Mayor, if I could just interject briefly, a lot of what the passion that Deputy Mayor Franklin's showing, I think falls into our legislative advocacy portion to what changes that I think he would like to see be made. But I do want to point out to the public, as is written in the agenda report, that we are doing encampment cleanups, and next month, we are doing a very large encampment cleanup in the same area that was mentioned, along Hacienda, to remove the debris, the litter, and the encampments.
And I think we're doing about two of them a year, isn't that right? I meant to actually speak to the substance of your question.
Actually, to take it all in, you have done six so far...
In how many months?
Pulling out 16 ton through, in 2019...
Okay.
You have done six so far with others' plan. This is really doing a good job here. You've removed 16 tons...
That's incredible.
...of debris, and...
I challenged the city manager privately that we should be down there on a full-time basis, cleaning up this area. We should be down there on a full-time basis, bringing the services that these folks need, and cleaning this area up, and we should make it our mission that these areas are a clean environment and that our community is clean, and if we need a place for people, I'm not unwilling to have a conversation about shelter beds. If we need shelter beds, let's figure out where we get them. That's part of the conversation we're having. You know, I'm willing to make housing available, but there's got to be a 360-degree approach to the problem, and part of, if I achieve anything out of this conversation, this big conversation about homelessness, if we don't talk about the effect of heroin and meth in creating homelessness, then I have failed completely. I want the whole city talking about heroin and meth, because when I go out and I talk to people who are homeless, I'm talking... to people who are homeless, I'm talking chronically homeless in our community, talking about the people that are soiled, who are living outdoors, I'm not even talking about the people that are living in their cars. That's a different, that's a different group of folks, who we serve their needs in a different way. I'm really talking about the people who have given up all hope, who really are, you know, I think I heard a statistic that the average lifespan is about four years, so these people are living out a death sentence, they'll live a shorter lifespan than somebody on death row by living through exposure and through, you know, their addiction. So we have a limited amount of time to save these people's lives, and so, anyway, you know, I want to hear more about the numbers of how much, and 16 tons is incredible, there's probably another 20 tons to pick up.
Probably.
And we got to do, we should at least know what the cost is, so we got a recommendation to do no more cleanup. I'd like to know what the cost is, what it would cost to do some more, and what it would cost to do enough. And to say it has no effect, it does have an effect, because, you know, and people are going to accuse me of criminalizing the homeless, that's what we hear again and again and again, "You're criminalizing the homeless." No, we're bringing people who need help to the help that they need, so that we can serve their needs as human beings. And unfortunately, in this situation, taking no action and changing the law so that they can camp in public, on the public sidewalks, that is not a compassionate approach, and I will challenge anybody, I will go toe-to-toe with anybody who wants to accuse me of criminalizing the homeless. No, we are establishing laws for good public order and that we can bring people in need to help that they need. That's what we're here to do.
And forgive me if I misspoke, we are not recommending that further action is not taken. We are continuing the program that Vista is doing right now with cleanups. What we are not recommending is a full cleanup, remove encampment program right at this moment because of costs associated with that. But Vista will continue, and as the city manager has just said, there, a large one is coming up next month, this month, October or November?
I know, it took far too long to say it, but what I'm saying is, I want the numbers on a full-scale program, I want to talk about it. I don't know if we can afford it, because I don't know what it's going to cost. I don't know how it fits into the budget of our larger programs. We've just got some new money coming for trash cleanup through a program that we've authorized recently. There's funding available, let's talk about how much it costs. You know, keeping the streets of this city clean, I want your six-year-old kids to be able to play in these areas. I've suggested turning this area into a park. There's already heavily cut paths, footpaths. I've suggested, and I've got some agreement from some of my colleagues, to turn those footpaths alone into a park. We'll take the swath, we'll put wooden fencing on either side, set the habitat aside, so it can be protected, and let's get people down there to activate these areas. They're beautiful areas, and they're already hard-cut footpaths. Let's make those hard-cut footpaths into a public parkway that people can come down and enjoy. But I want you to feel safe to go running there, to walk your dog, I want you to feel safe to bring your kids down there. I want every part of this city to be safe and clean, and I don't feel sorry about fighting for that.
Deputy Mayor, you asked for some specifics about what it would cost. We do have, I believe, a quotation from the company that does our cleanups now, and it's escaping me, I'm going to ask Ms. Lee to speak to in a second, but I also wanted to speak about a program that took place up in Northern California last year in the community of Half Moon Bay, where they had approximately 40 homeless individuals living in an area where they did a full-scale cleanup, encampment removal, and placement into housing. It took three years to get that program completely through and all of the people out of the encampment and into the program, and it cost almost $300,000. It's not undoable, but it's very expensive.
That sounds fantastic. I've been living, I've been on this council for five years, and I have watched as this problem has exploded. So if you tell me that $300,000 and three years solves this problem, where do I sign up?
How's approximately 40 people?
Well, I don't know how many chronically homeless we have. We have 425 in our last count, and not all those people are living in these encampments. We probably have sub-100 people in these encampments, correct?
You're probably correct, but what I'd like to also mention is, with our funding sources being finite, what we'd like, finite, what we'd like to do as we are establishing the draft strategic plan is to say, "Here are all the items you asked us to bring back, and here's the money..."
Well, I know we have the $300,000.
"...and get those priorities." Yes, we do have the $300,000, but that means we don't have it for somebody else.
And if three years gets it done, then I extra want to talk about this when we get to the... So I hear the staff recommendation, but I extra want to recommend that we go the other direction and increase the cleanups.
As you move on, Mayor, the one thing I wanted to point out, we have 122 documented unsheltered homeless, and in working with the sheriff's department in the specific creeks around Hacienda, we estimate somewhere between 25 and 35 individuals living. I will tell you that for the next cleanup that is going to take place in November there, it's about $35,000 just for that one cleanup. That doesn't include the cost of going back a week or two later, a month later, and following that, but that is a rough cost for a one-time cleanup in that creek area.
If I had this trash in my backyard at my home, I guarantee you I'd figure out how to find the money to pay to clean it up, and I consider this to be the backyard of my community, the front yard of my community, we got to find the money, we got to have the will to clean up our city. This community deserves clean waterways, it deserves clean environmental set-asides, it deserves a clean community, a safe community, and there is no higher priority, we got to find the funding for that.
Okay, we have a couple other speakers here. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate Deputy Mayor, your comments. I go visit the homeless in the various creeks or areas that I see them, and I talk to them. Every single one of them is there because of mental illness or drug addiction. I have never met anybody who was homeless because they couldn't afford their rent. So that's another discussion. One of the problems with breaking this out into each individual component is they're all married together. You can't really have a conversation on one aspect without talking about all of the aspects of it. Your comment that we couldn't do more in the cleanup because there's no place to put them, that bothered me as well. When we are looking at the things that we are looking at that are happening, cleanup is paramount throughout the entire city, and keeping it clean is paramount to reducing and eliminating any of the disease that we see happening. So I think, for me, it's paramount that we do this. But to do this, clean it up, get them out, we have to find someplace to put them, we have to find facilities. So my question is, or my comment is, we need to be working in concert with the County of San Diego. Now, one of the recent issues that we've been talking about for over a year now, because I remember going down to the Board of Supervisors and making comments to them last October, was about mental health beds around the county. When Tri-City closed their facility last year, that became a huge topic of discussion. And it came to light that the county had beds that they weren't funding, and so there were, there was space, but no money to put them, and we've been talking with the county to fund the beds that they have. My understanding is, in talking with the supervisor, our supervisor, Jim Desmond, was that they are identifying the monies and that they will be opening these beds. So my question is, or my comment is, I want to find places to put people. I want to find out what the county is doing for this, because the county has money that they're getting from wherever they're getting money from. I know we talked before at the last meeting, we have a million coming in from Community Resource Center. So yes, cleanup, we have to, we can't say we can't do more at this time because of a lack of funding and housing in the region. To me, that's a nonstarter. We need to keep up with the cleaning, we need to find a place to put people, we need to find resources for them, because until we do, this is not an issue that will be solved. And then we go to the advocacy portion of the program, which a lot of the problems that we are facing come directly at us from what's happening in Sacramento. And until we can get the people in Sacramento to figure out what they've done that has caused a lot of this, for instance, you know, drug-addicted, one of the propositions that passed, or one of the bills that they did, they put, they made it so that courts can't mandate drug rehabilitation anymore. So now you have criminals back out on the street who come out still drug-addicted, and that's some of the population that we have. So there are different things, there are so many different levels and facets to this problem, and we can't solve it by ourselves by throwing money at something and doing it piecemeal. We have to do it together, we have to do it all at the same time, and we have to do it with whatever resources we can find on every single level of government. And then we have to do the advocacy, and I know you're going to talk about that another time. So when we talk about this, that was my point, we can't say we can't do it, we have to find a way to do it. And when I go down Hacienda over by LA Fitness, and we have a huge homeless community in that area right there, the trash is so bad, it's pushing up the size of the embankments out into the road. We can't allow that to be in our community. We have to clean it up. We have to have a program, we have to have a plan. We can't say we can't do it. So I'm just wanting you to take that paragraph right out of your report.
We'll take it right out. I do want to stress that the city is doing a lot of cleanup, and encampment cleanup.
No, I know we are.
I do want to stress that. I'm not saying there isn't more...
Right.
...out there, because in November, we're going to do another one.
Right. No, I know we are, we get the reports and we see it. But my point is, you put in this program, and you've said out loud that we can't do more because of reasons, and I'm thinking, yes, we can. I don't want to put out to my community that we cannot do this. That's not acceptable.
Councilmember Contreras.
I too have gone down to the encampments with the COPS team, and yeah, it's heartbreaking. I mean, I grew, I've been in Vista my whole life, we used to go down to the creek to, you know, look at the crawdads, and, you know, you could still do that, however, you see a lot of litter strewn everywhere. You know, I personally witnessed bike, bicycle chop-chops happening, and spray cans that they're using to, you know, spray the bicycles a different color, and the spray cans are getting tossed into the creek. You know, and I understand the concern that we want to be able to remove the trash immediately, especially taking into consideration that we are upstream in this watershed, and all of this flows out to the ocean. But it seems like the concern that I'm hearing from, from the staff report, is that we don't necessarily have the ability right now to remove individuals because we don't have somewhere to put them, or, and/or that it's against state law. That's a really big hurdle for us to overcome, and it's something that I definitely would like for us to figure out a good way to move forward, where we can provide the help that's needed. And I 100% agree with Councilmember Rigby that, you know, a lot of this does fall on the shoulders of the county, since a lot of the, a lot, if not, you know, all of the funds that come from the state move through the county, that's the entity, you know, that allocates funds for behavioral health and whatnot. So I think, you know, that's an important part of the legislative advocacy, not just at the state level, but just here in our backyard for our Board of Supervisors. You know, one of the things is that we can continue to point to, you know, one documentary, like Seattle is Dying. I've seen that documentary. I also, I mean, I majored in film and media studies and sociology, and, you know, it's one thing to see a documentary, it's another thing to understand why that documentary was made, and the motive and agenda behind that documentary. And it does show one perspective that I think is really important, but we do have to take in mind that there's a lot more to this problem than just what was illustrated in that documentary. So maybe one of the things that we can do, if we, if we're not able at this time, because there's so many other hurdles in front of us, if we're not able to create a comprehensive program for cleaning up our encampments, and even if we look specifically at sensitive areas which have been identified by our biological preserve overlay, if we can't overcome the legislative challenges in the fact that we don't have enough beds to place individuals, then perhaps an alternative solution would be to have a minimum number of cleanups that need to happen within a calendar year. You know, I wasn't aware that we have completed six cleanups with seven right around the corner, and I completely agree, I mean, there's probably a lot more tons of trash out there. It really is sad to witness what's happening. There are so many different reasons why this is occurring and why it's getting worse. So perhaps, you know, if we can't move forward with some kind of comprehensive plan for cleaning up encampments outside of the scope of what we're already doing, perhaps it would be good to set a minimum amount of cleanups that we could do in a calendar year. And so, with that, I'll turn it back over to my colleagues.
I just want to let you know that we have been meeting with the county, and we are advocating mildly, you'll be the advocates, for the county to be more, provide more resources in Vista. They are working on expanding their mental health beds, and when we talk about places to put people, we're not literally talking about a home somewhere. We are talking about beds or some kind of shelter, and I think we know the lack of space for single males.
Yes, that's something I personally encountered when I did the point-in-time count in January, and I feel like the bulk of the individuals that, you know, we encountered were single males, and they do not have anywhere to go. And the most heartbreaking thing is that when someone does tell you, "Hey, I want, you know, this is what I need," and you can't turn them anywhere locally for that service, you know, I mean, how realistic is it for us to tell someone that has behavioral health issues, perhaps coupled with addiction issues, "You know what, you just have to wait till 9:00 AM so you can call, you know, shelter." So, I mean, it's such a complex issue, but perhaps we can have a minimum amount of cleanups that we can do in a calendar year to kind of have a, and I hate to say meet this problem halfway, but we just don't have the ability to create a comprehensive program because of the hurdles that we face, and maybe one day that won't be the case, but for right now, I would like to walk away with this with some kind of solution, and I think we can do more. So I would like to see a minimum number of cleanups done within a calendar year.
I would just add one thing, because I meet with Supervisor Desmond often, and we, and the mayor is from the different cities. So Supervisor Desmond and Gaspar are funding Tri-City Hospital, they're doing, they're going to be building, building and put in some beds. I don't know the exact numbers, it was like, it was, I want to say 15 to 18 beds. Oceanside's also putting in some beds over there, and I think it's in the, I want to say in the county building, I'm not sure about that, but they're also putting some beds in. Palomar Hospital in San Marcos is going to be building and put, a building, they have to, some of these have to be built, so they're, but they're in process, and they're building for some beds. Escondido says they'll take them, they have, for the county funding interface is doing some of their, interface is doing a building, and then they're trying to get some additional land to do some more. So things are happening out there, they're, people are working on it, it's just that we don't have the beds today, but they're working on that, so I would just add that. So Councilmember Franklin, Deputy Mayor.
Well, I appreciate that. I know we've all been involved in the meetings. I've been down to the County Administration Building to visit with Supervisor's staff to get deeper into the issues. We've had some high-level discussions here in Vista about bringing some more mental health services to Vista. You know, I know we've, several of us have been involved in drilling down into the particulars of negotiating to make that come to pass here in Vista. I've been very intimately involved with it, and I only add all that just so you know that the council is very serious, and I'm very serious about bringing services to meet the needs of individuals, you know, who have mental illness challenges. A couple of more things I wanted to add, I want to explain to you how your mathematics are broken completely. I want to explain to you how your mathematics are broken completely, how your calculator doesn't work anymore, because you talk about 16 tons and you're doing one cleanup every other month. Why do we paint our electric utility boxes with pretty images? Can anybody tell me? Well, I'll tell you. Because people won't graffiti them, right? That's why we do it. We don't, we didn't do it because we thought it would be a cute idea. We wanted people to stop tagging those boxes. If you went down there every third day and you cleaned up the stuff down there, we're paying by the ton or the hour, one of the two, correct?
By the hour.
By the hour. Well, here's where your calculator doesn't work. You're talking about the added expense. If you went down there every three days to clean it out, how much stuff you think you'd find? Do you think it would be more in the course of a year or less than if you went down there every two months? Your calculator's broken. Sharpen your pencil and think about the business model of going down there every three days and carrying everything out of there. Who's gonna, who's gonna bring their things down there? If I got 60 days, you know, you can't even check into a hotel in the state of California for 30 days at a time. You live there 31 days or 32 days and they call it a residential place. You have to have an occupancy permit for a, for a full-time residence. You have to check out of a hotel on the 31st day and check back in. But you get 60 days. See, our math is wrong. Our approach is wrong. If we invest the time and the money, there won't be 16 tons on aggregate. There will be six tons next year, and the year after that, there will be two, and the year after that, there will be one, and eventually, people will learn that they cannot camp there and they won't bring, you know, they go through the trash. You thought they're going through the trash to find cans to recycle. That's what you thought they're going through the trash for. It's not what they're going through the trash for. They're looking for empty plastic bottles to use as a restroom, and if you go down there, you'll see giant piles of urine-filled bottles. It's disgusting. Now, I want you to think about this, for all the you who think that I'm a mean guy and that I want to criminalize the homeless. What if you had a 12-year-old child who was autistic or mentally ill, and he went out to the backyard and he said, "I'm gonna live in this tent because I want to. Not gonna take a shower. I don't feel like eating the nutritious food. I'm gonna dig through the dumpster. I don't want to take my medicine and I don't want any help from anybody." Would you let your 12-year-old autistic child live in the backyard in squalid circumstances and urinate in plastic bottles? Would you do that? I don't think so. Why would you not do that? Because it would be barbaric and inhumane, and the Child Protective Services would come and take your child away. Why then do you allow someone else's brother to live in this circumstance who is schizophrenic? Why then do you allow somebody who's addicted to meth, who you knew full well, cannot make good decisions about their own safety and welfare? So for anybody that wants to assail me as not caring about other people, I only say, how on earth can you walk past somebody in this predicament and think it is not your charge as a human being to do something about it? Every one of us owes a debt to our fellow brothers and sisters in humanity to go and lift them out of these circumstances if, by some unfortunate reality, because of drugs or mental illness, they cannot do it for themselves. So if we need shelter beds, then let's find shelter beds. If we need more drug rehab treatment programs, and by the way, I know, because I've been down there with the Exodus and McAllister social workers, they go down and they offer, and they don't get many takers because it's voluntary. And I know this is shocking, but people who are addicted to heroin prefer to remain addicted to it. It's a chemical thing. We keep treating it like it's a mental decision. It's a compulsory chemical addiction that they're powerless to fight, and yet we treat it like it's their decision to remain addicted. It's not their decision to remain addicted. If they could get out of it by making a decision, they would. When are we gonna step in and do what is humane and just and moral and do something about this? So you can act like being tolerant of this problem is somehow a righteous mode of behavior, but it is not. If you had a 12-year-old child who was autistic, would you let him live in these circumstances if you could prevent it? No. And so you shouldn't let somebody else's brother, sister, son, or daughter, mother, or father live in these circumstances either. If we get in there and we do the cleanups every three days, I'll stake my job on it. I'll tell you, there would be less trash in aggregate at the end of the year than there was the previous 12 months. I believe that. I know I'm right.
Seen everyone quiet for the moment. We have speakers and we need to move on, and the, do you want to do the whole thing first and then get the speakers?
Yes.
Let's do the speakers.
Let's do the speakers. Let's do the speakers. After this, okay. That'll be okay? Okay, so we have seven speakers. We'll start with Michael Joseph. It's Michael here still, and then followed by Cheryl Keck, and followed by Paul Webster. And if you, if the ones I call the names will stand over here, so line up the, you know, yeah, are you Michael? Yeah, you're first, and then the other two will line up over here on the side. They'll move them through faster. You have three minutes.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And you'll see it lines up. Yellow gives you 30 seconds longer, and then red is over.
All right.
Okay.
I owe this to God Almighty and my community here in Vista. Greetings. My name is Michael and have been a homeless U.S. Army veteran with schizophrenia. I have been homeless twice, once in Santa Cruz and once in North County San Diego. From this vantage point, I am prepared to speak about the stigma of having a mental health diagnosis. Ever since we were little kids, many viewed mental health hospitals as funny farms. So historically, those with a diagnosis are made to feel less than equal. When I was first diagnosed in Santa Cruz, it took me three weeks of being in a hospital before I finally started admitting that something may be wrong with my health. When the realization started creeping in that I might really be a schizophrenic, I felt deep sorrow and despair and shame like I had let my people down. I was very vulnerable. When you are homeless with a mental health imbalance, that vulnerability plays out in how open you are when approached by other citizens or police. If you are approached by one who has an authoritative stance, the authority isn't going to get the answers they need because the approach is intimidating to a vulnerable person. I suggest a relaxed, easygoing approach that comes from the heart with much compassion. An individual who has a mental health imbalance needs to feel like they belong as an equal. With this approach, you will better get the answers which will determine that the homeless person needs to go to the hospital instead of jail. Thank you for your time and efforts. May wisdom find each one of you. Michael Joseph.
Thank you, Michael.
Sure.
Cheryl Keck, followed by Paul Webster, followed by Aaron Mellon.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Keck. I've been a Vista resident for 27 years. I'm homeless because I cannot afford rent. I'm not a drug addict. But I do, I have made friends out of the four and a half years I've lived in my car. Most of them are addicted to drugs. A lot of them tell me how they would love to turn their lives around. Now, one of the issues that I have found, other than them being right back out on the streets after jail, is that they've known each other for at least 20 years. These people have known each other for most of their lives. Once they come back into the circle, that whole circle, the whole drug circle starts all over again. So maybe there should be programs for where friends could get together. They go in together, they get cleaned together, they come out together, get cleaned together, and maybe have some kind of an impact in avoiding that revolving door in and out of the jail cells. I'd like to make an update about Casey Clayson, who I had spoken about back in June. He was incarcerated for a couple of years. He's a war veteran. I do believe he served the Iraq war. He's back in jail, as I had predicted, and he entrusted me to let me know what he still needed to do. He still needed to apply for benefits, for VA benefits. He's not capable of doing this himself. He's got severe PTSD. He has other mental issues. You cannot just toss him back out on the streets and think he's gonna be able to pick up his life. It's not gonna happen. He'll be back in the drug circle and back in and out of jail. He's a war veteran. He deserves better than this. He served our country. If our federal government cannot support our cities to house our veterans, there's really not much hope for anybody else. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Paul Webster, followed by Aaron Mellon, followed by Joshua Tienda.
Good evening, members of the City Council. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor and other members of the council. As a policy analyst who has been looking at federal, state, and regional legislation on homelessness for the past four or five years, I wanted to just itemize about four or five different things with respect to legislative advocacy. First of all, a big thank you to the council here for agreeing to an amicus brief on the Martin versus Boise Ninth Circuit Court decision. I think that law enforcement all up and down California are handcuffed and concerned that they can't do their jobs and keep our cities and streets clean and safe with this decision. Second, I also wanted to talk a little bit about Prop 47 and 57 and efforts to reform or repeal these really wrong-headed and misguided state propositions. Although they were, Prop 47 was approved by 60% of the voters, it's resulted in essentially a incentive for criminals to steal with impunity. The City of San Francisco Police reported 33,000 car break-ins last year since the implementation. And in fact, in Oceanside, they've seen a significant spike. If you look at the spike of homelessness in Oceanside, particularly around Brother Benno's and the riverbed, you see a lot of these things happened just after the passage of Prop 47 and 57. Prop 47 and 57 are detrimental in terms of homelessness because they increase homelessness and are making it more difficult to serve the truly homeless. The result of these measures have flooded service providers, they've reduced the safety and livability of communities, and have further burdened the regions' and state response to homelessness. Another piece of legislation that often goes unnoticed and is particularly troubling is SB 1380. SB 1380 was passed in 2016 and requires that every taxpayer dollar from California citizens targeted to homelessness must exclusively fund housing-first approaches. This is problematic for three reasons. First, it fails the local control test by dictating from Sacramento how communities must use state money to solve problems. Second, it requires the use of state money for homeless, they prohibit requirements on sobriety, work, and program compliance. As you know, Solutions for Change walked away for more than half a million dollars a year in funding because we would not abandon our safe and sober programs to protect children and support the desires of our residents to support their recovery. SB 1380 is the epitome of top-down, once-it-all, fits-all law that prevents the City of Vista in supporting its efforts. Another piece of legislation that I wanted to focus on federally that I'd like to add to your agenda.
Your time is up. I'm sorry.
Is HR 202001, the Homeless Children and Youth Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Aaron Mellon, followed by Joshua Tienda, followed by Katie Melendez.
Hello, yes, I'm Aaron Mellon. So I volunteer for a group called Heal, Homeless Experience Advocacy and Leadership. I was one of those people down in those camps that you spoke of. Addicted, yes. But let me kind of make a correction on that. It goes, mental health, alcohol, actually, mental health, opiates, meth, and then everything else below that. Not everyone is addicted to something on the streets. So that's totally false. And I want to address what you guys address the most, which is the cleanup. That is a big deal. That's something I've thought about a lot. Again, I talked last month about this, and I said, well, why don't you give these people jobs to clean up the mess? That would be the best thing to do. It kills two birds with one stone. It gives people some sense of purpose, and it gets that mess cleaned up for you. And they're probably not gonna have to wear hazmat suits, which is an additional cost as well. So I think that would be something you guys might want to float and talk about amongst yourselves to get stuff done. It would be a step in the right direction. And the other thing is shelters. There's no shelter beds here, really, or a tent city. So once you have them in the system, you have somewhere to put them. Otherwise, it becomes criminalizing the homeless, which, yes, it is. It's criminalized even though law says otherwise. So just something to think about. Give these people a job. Give them something to do that motivates them and gives them some sense of purpose, whether they're drug addicts or not. So something to think about, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Tienda, followed by Katie Melendez, followed by Kathleen Boyle.
Councilmembers, Mayor, there's a lot of talk about, you know, the climate change with sustainable blemming, and we know about it, that you can't take and not give, gift and expect to have a sustainable model. And no, you can't cut a tree and not plant one and expect it to continue for much more. And that, I think that's true with a homeless situation. We need a sustainable model where we not only, these people are not only being treated, but are there, they're pushed up so it can be productive, so it can give back to the If we don't do that, then we're gonna be, it's gonna be an ever-ending cycle of whack-a-mole of cleaning up or arresting these people, and it's the same thing all over again. And if, and, I mean, yes, there's a place for housing first, but it won't, it won't, it's not a sustainable model. We need sobriety requirements so that we can get these people to be productive citizens and not just, not just be a burden to society, but to give back to the community as well. That's all my.
Thank you, Joshua. Katie Melendez, followed by Kathleen Boyle.
Hi, everyone. My name is Katie Melendez, and I'm a social worker here in Vista, so I actually do a lot of the things that you guys are talking about tonight. I work in a drug and alcohol treatment program, and I assist my clients with identifying housing barriers and overcoming those barriers. Many barriers that my clients experience are things that they can personally control, right? Like their job, their sobriety. But the most vicious barrier that we face is the lack of affordable and appropriate housing and shelter options for people who are coming off of the street overwhelmingly. Even if a client of mine has a job and they're sober, they got their 30 days in, they're really working the program and doing what they have to do, they are so at risk for relapse and crisis because they are on the street. Can you imagine trying to maintain your job if you don't have a place to shower and get ready for work? I would lose my job. Can you imagine trying to maintain your sobriety when there is trauma and triggers all around you? People with substance use disorders have incredible agency to overcome their behavioral health challenges with their substance use disorder. They have the power, contrary to what John Franklin has stated, they have the power and the agency to overcome, but there are a lot of challenges. It's very hard, and even harder when you're sleeping outside. So when we do provide appropriate and affordable housing options for people, a lot of those barriers are easier to overcome. If I, as a social worker, had access and avenues to direct my clients, that would be such a seamless process. But we're fighting about why people become homeless in the first place, when what every person who's experiencing the trauma of homelessness has in common is that they don't have a place to live. So for me, that has to be a top priority when we're discussing these strategies to address homelessness, because without adequate resources... address homelessness, because without adequate resources, the barriers are just going to continue. And I see that every day. I'm boots on the ground. I'm in these encampments every single week. I'm working with folks who are recovering from meth addiction, heroin addiction, and it's really hard. But what makes it harder is that we don't have enough resources to meet the needs of low-income and poor individuals who are experiencing housing insecurity and homelessness. So, on top of listening to some of the folks with lived experience here, I hope you understand that these are very complicated challenges, but we do have options. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Boyle.
Hi, good evening. I almost don't know where to begin. It's such a complex issue, and I think we all know that. That's not an esoteric bit of information. A lot of people divide homelessness into kind of three, with three main causes. Drug addiction comes up a lot, also mentally ill, and economically—people who are economically impacted. And I think, from what I have seen—I did—my dissertation was on people who were severe crack cocaine users. So, this was an earlier epidemic. And almost everybody in my sample, my dissertation sample, was homeless. So, I interviewed a lot of people. And one thing that happens is that when a person becomes homeless for one reason, they might slip into another category. So, I can kind of understand that. If I'm kind of sitting around and I can't—I can't afford to live somewhere, I don't have a job, I might accept a drug from somebody who's sitting near me, and give myself a bit of euphoria. People who are mentally ill start using drugs. They never might have used a drug before. People who are using drugs and feel hopeless might start slipping into mental illness because a lot of their mental illnesses, like physical illnesses, you might have a predisposition, and then you have an outside stressor that kicks you over the line. So, a person who has diabetes in their genetic makeup might live their whole life without diabetes if they're very careful, or they might not. They might slip over into diabetes. So, it's similar to that. I went to a community forum in Oceanside last night. It was given by Chris Rodriguez, and he had a lot of ideas that I kind of hear from some of you. I disagree with a lot of his ideas. But he did mention that there's going to be a planning conference of North County cities in early December. So, I think this is a chance for y'all, for us, to make a kind of North County effort so we don't play with somebody called whack-a-mole. So, we don't—because what if you do clean up all these rivers, which is a great—all our creeks—that sounds like a great goal, but then people are going to go to Oceanside or go to San Marcos. So, it has to be something that is done altogether, and this is where I think the county needs to step in and step up. Chris Rodriguez said he has some wacky ideas. If people can't afford to live in San Diego, let them go to Riverside, which sounds like let them eat cake. So, then they have an hour and a half drive, maybe there's no jobs out there, gas is expensive, and it's bad for the environment. But his point was, "We don't need more affordable housing in San Diego, so take that one off the table." He said that only 18% of homeless people have jobs. Well, okay, so—which came first, the chicken or the egg? I think he's confusing cause and effect.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd like to move on. I see you have your button push. I would like to move on to the parking—safe parking lots. But John, do you want to say something before we move on?
Yeah, I do. I'm tired of this lie that I keep hearing. Here's the facts. Minimum wage is $12 an hour. We're at the lowest unemployment that we've had historically in decades. I lived with roommates. I wasn't ashamed to do it because I couldn't afford the rent of a whole apartment. City of Vista, Craigslist, one-bedroom, private full bathroom, awesome roommates, $850. Private room for rent, $600. Room for rent in comfy home, $750. Room, $501. Quiet room in our Vista home, $700. Furnished room for rent in beautiful house, $750. One-bedroom rental in house with retreat-like setting in the hills—doesn't that sound nice—in Vista, $880. Furnished room with bathroom and garage, $400. Furnished room, quiet area, $600. I'm going to take me 10 more minutes, and those are just the ones that were posted today. Those are just the ones that were posted today. Now, somebody explain to me why I'm wrong. Somebody explain to me why I'm wrong. If we've got individuals who cannot work, who cannot find housing, I'm the most strident fiscal conservative you ever met in your whole life. If you literally cannot work because of mental illness, I will pay for you to have housing out of the money that I earn to feed my family, because that's the righteous thing to do. But do not tell me that if you make $12 an hour—I mean, that's more than $24,000 a year. It's almost $25,000. I know what the taxes are, and that—I used to make $24,000 not too awfully long ago. About a decade, maybe 12 years ago, I made $24,000. This was my first starting wage. There hadn't been a lot of wage growth. There has been the last two or three years, but it's not worth a whole lot less than it was. I've lived on it. I lived in a 600-square-foot apartment. I wasn't embarrassed. Before that, I had roommates. Now, somebody tell me why I'm wrong. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of the lies. Brand-new apartment in a commercial apartment complex, Miramonte here in Vista, $1,500 for a two-bedroom. My half would be $750 to live in an apartment complex if you don't want to share a room in somebody's house. Somebody tell me why I'm wrong. I'm tired of the lie. I'm tired of it. I'm sick of it. Somebody tell me why I'm wrong. There are services—we—Katie's here. She's a social worker. If I'm addicted to drugs and I want into your program today, how many spaces—do you have room for me? If I want—if I say I want in, do you have room for me today? Is the answer yes?
You need one of the other parts.
If I meet—so, you have space available. One thing I want to do is I want an inventory of shelter beds available. I want to see for women with children. I want to see for women and husbands—women and fathers with children. I want to see an inventory of shelter beds for the mentally ill, those who are identified. And if you're accurate and you say more of them are mentally ill than drug-addicted, then shame on us. Shame on us for allowing mentally ill people who can't have a job to live in a ravine. Shame on us. That is depraved. That is depraved that our society would allow it. Shame on us. And let us reach out to our state legislators and to our federal congresspeople, and let us make them do something about it, because shame on all of us for allowing people who are mentally ill, schizophrenic, bipolar, whatever it is. Shame on us for allowing people to live in squalid circumstances in a ravine. Shame on us for that. Let's get angry about this. But I'm tired of people telling lies. Get your facts figured out. Sharpen your pencil and get your calculator straightened out. I could go and get a job if I'm sober for $12 an hour, and I will show up at your place of business, and I will ask to borrow your broom, and I will sweep your business clean, and I will wipe your windows. I will do whatever I have to do. And we've got to invest in job training, but we've got to give people the skills to find work. We've got to help them with their resumes. I will invest my money, and I would recommend the investment of your tax dollars in programs to help people find work. I will help people learn to fish. But stop asking—for those of us who are taxpaying citizens—to throw fish at people, smack them in the head with a fish, and go, "There you go. We'll be back tomorrow with another fish." We've got to take those individuals who can be self-sufficient, and we've got to encourage them, and we've got to give them the tools to become self-sufficient. Now, this argument that you can't afford housing—somebody explain this to me, because I don't understand it. I'll catch up with you afterwards, because I want to hear it. I'll stay tonight until everybody goes home. If I'm wrong, come and tell me. But what I'm telling you is, I just looked, and you can go to the library right next door here, and you can get on the Internet if you don't have a phone or you don't have a computer. But you're cooking up some stuff to come in here and tell me that's not the God's honest truth, because there's rooms available for $400 and $500. And you're not explaining to me why I'm wrong, that somebody who's employed and sober—so, you're making a straw man argument. The straw man argument is that there's no available housing that's market rate, that's available, and that's the driver of this problem. But a simple search of the Internet debunks that claim. So, now what you've got to be telling me is that there's another reason this person can't find a job. Well, let's address it. If it's mental illness, let's address it. If it's drug addiction, let's address it. Okay? Whether I'm right or you're right, whether it's drug addiction is the number one, or it's mental illness, a combination thereof, let's address it. But what let's not do is act like these problems are going to solve themselves and walk past them every day and do nothing and not get angry about it. I would suggest, if you're not as angry about this problem as I am, then you haven't looked into it enough, because once you get educated on this, you're going to be angry. But I'm telling you, if I'm making $12 an hour and I'm earning $24,500 a year, I can certainly afford $600, $700, $800 for rent. So, the math doesn't make any sense to me. Somebody's got to help me out. But what I think we need is, we need an inventory. We need to know what shelters, beds are available for men, men with substance abuse, men with mental illness. Let's get a document that shows us what is available. Maybe we need to do a housing inventory. Do we have data from U.S. Census Bureau through the Long Form Census on average cost of housing presently? Maybe we need to spend some time counting how many available housing units are available and what the average is, what's the 25th percentile cost, and let's look, what are the income issues that these folks face? You're bringing to us a plan to give people who have a three-day notice to leave, to write them a rent check. Can we put that money into helping somebody get rehoused? Because I'm not sure I can support this. Everybody that gets a three-day notice is going to get a check. I think what we need to do is—we need to—when people go through a plan like solutions, can we invest in those people that invest in themselves? I mean, we're not going to solve this problem by expecting that people who are in these circumstances do nothing to help themselves. It's a two-way street. We need to help them, and they need to help themselves. But we've also got to get honest about the facts and the figures. And if we're all going to—you know, I'm only 40, so I made a starting wage equivalent to the current minimum wage, maybe more recently than some other people. I remember living with roommates. I would not be embarrassed to do it again if I had to. So, we've got to hear some reality here. So, we've got to bring some real facts to these debates, because to say that everybody ought to have a 2,400-square-foot house, or they all ought to have their own two-bedroom at the fanciest new—no. I mean, not everybody can afford that. I wish they could, but some people got to rent a room because that's what they can afford. So, you know, I'm looking, and there's a lot of places—I only read you half of the ones that were posted today. You think all those people filled them up? Probably not.
Hey, John, can we move on a little bit?
Sure.
That'd be okay? Okay, so, let's move on to—the safe parking lots, except we decided not to explore a safe parking program, but I don't know why it's on here, but, okay.
You actually asked us to bring back information, but understanding that based on some of the legal challenges, it probably wouldn't be something that would be a part of our strategic plan. But since you asked for the information, we did want to include just a brief summary of what's going on.
So, the summary is on the slide, and basically, there will be, per Jewish Family Service, a parking—a safe parking program somewhere in North County by December of 2019. Unlikely that it will be in the Vista area, but you can see the details of the program on the slide, as well as the cost, which is a little over $300,000. We, again, are not recommending this program be instituted or followed or developed for Vista at this time. We will keep you informed of what's going on, both in terms of legal regulations for overnight parking, as well as what happens with the program that's being developed by
You got questions for that? Councilmember Contreras.
So, one of the main issues with the overnight safe parking is that it's currently not permissible in the City of Vista, correct? So, it would require a majority of the council to move forward with making it a possibility, accepted use. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that's currently not something that we have. Is that correct? That was from the last discussion. I just want to be on the record that I'm 100% in favor of an overnight safe parking with 24/7 restrooms, the ability to shower, so mobile shower, and ability to do laundry. I know I'm in the minority, but I just want to state that for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, in addition, you asked us to return with options related to an outreach program for your historic downtown area. We looked into a number of programs that were in excess of $400,000 in cost, but we did come across an option that is very viable cost-wise and provides—if you'll go to the next slide—provides a whole series of benefits for the downtown area. What it consists of is a van that is driven by a trained driver that will come through the area and provide transportation for homeless people in the downtown area. What it does is it transports them to a location that happens to be outside of Vista, but to a location where they can get a shower, they can do laundry, they can use a computer, they can spend the day, they can have access to mental and addiction services if they choose. They're not required. And they can be connected to other case management services. At the end of the day, the van returns them to the location where they were picked up. This is a pilot program. It hasn't been done before. It would be—it would need to be done in conjunction with a nonprofit that has this type of a clubhouse or other setting, and there are several that have such facilities that would be willing to work with the City of Vista should you decide to adopt a van and try this program. The cost—oh, yes, the cost is about $70,000 for five days a week of transportation. And it can be funded through the Affordable Housing Fund, SB 2, or your CDBG funds.
So, it's up to the end of that one, and I'll have questions—I see speakers all lit up here, so, okay. Ready for them? Okay. We'll start with Councilmember Green.
Hi, thank you. So, my question initially was, don't we have to have somebody on the receiving end if we're going to be putting them in a van and taking them elsewhere? But it sounds like we're just taking them on like a day trip to be educated and get the wraparound services, and then we bring them back. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, a question I have for you is, if the van service is out in downtown, and we locate somebody that wants to be transferred to somebody, and there is somewhere on the receiving end to receive them, per se, is it possible, in conjunction with this program, to relocate homeless people who might be trying to get back to their city of origin? So, for instance, if we find somebody in downtown who's originally from El Cajon, they haven't been able to get there, would this service say, "Hey, let's find your cousin, uncle, brother in El Cajon where you're going to go, and then we can bring you there," hence taking an unsheltered homeless off—
I think what would happen under those circumstances is that the van program itself would not provide that service, but once they would get to the location—I'm calling it a clubhouse—for lack of a better word—there will be wraparound services, and there will be case management. So, if they—
A homeless mobility hub of sorts.
Yeah, so—
The clubhouse, per se.
So, if they had that, under your hypothetical, if they had someplace they could relocate to, they could work with a case manager at the location.
Okay. Okay. So we're not, and that was my thing, is I wanted to make sure that we're not putting so many restrictions on this program, that we can actually help the homeless individual. So that's what I'm saying is, just because we pick them up, we don't have to bring them right back. If we take them to a place where they're getting services and we can help them with what they want, we're not required to just pick them up, take them around for the day, and bring them back. We can actually help them, right?
The idea is to do exactly that. The idea is to help them and move, and improve their situation.
Yeah.
But it is not a requirement.
Okay. But we can't.
If I can interject, is I think most everybody knows on the council that if there's a homeless individual that can be connected back up with a family, wherever that might be, the city will do its best to make sure that that connection takes place.
Okay, so this program can kind of work in conjunction with that, per se. Awesome. That was my, thank you.
Councilmember Contreras.
I think it's definitely worth, you know, $70,000 a year, well, first to explore this as a pilot program. And if the outcome is something good, then, you know, we can continue it. But I'm definitely in favor of us going down this path and this being one of the strategies that we utilize to try and get some, some good, an end goal, right? Where there's reduction and where individuals are able to get the services they need that we don't provide locally. My question is, with a program like this, would there be pushback from other cities? Is that?
If you mean, will other cities object to us taking them out of Vista and bringing them to the clubhouse?
Correct. I mean, I'm just curious if that's, if you've heard anything where-
We don't think so.
Okay.
Because the clubhouses now perform the services. We would be the first ones to do the, to provide a van to transport to the clubhouses. It's a pilot program, but-
So we're in, we're uncharted waters right now.
In general, we would be bringing them back to Vista.
Okay.
We would not be dropping them off in Oceanside.
Yeah, I don't want it to be an express one-way ticket, you know? It's not, it's not the most compassionate thing to do, you know? But definitely, it is a difficult thing to do when you don't have somewhere to live and there are several other stressors in one's life, and you may not have, you probably don't have the ability to transport yourself. And some of these services are so scattered, I think it's a good idea for us to explore this pilot program.
I might add, there are, there are other cities that may not have the same type of pilot program, but they do provide some transportation to services. They come into Vista, and then they wait, and they take those people back to the city of origin.
And is there, is there any data associated with that, where we could kind of have an idea of how many individuals are utilizing a similar service and some of the outcomes? Or is that data collection not part of the process or something that we're able to access?
I'm not sure if any of these programs are being administered by other cities, but the nonprofits that may be providing those transportation services, a clinic or something else, we can reach out and see if there's something they can provide.
Okay, yeah, I would like that. And just to reiterate, I know last time we, as a, as a council, you know, really want to have a lot more data collection, so I just want to reiterate that. I would definitely not have this outside of the scope of that request. So data collection is going to be essential. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Did you say this model is being used somewhere else right now?
The clubhouse model is-
Well, the transportation?
The transportation would be a pilot program.
It's not being used in any other city that we're aware of in the country?
Well, not that we're aware of. I have, we have not looked everywhere, but in talking to people who run these types of programs, and in trying to find a solution that dealt with historic downtown that made more sense for us, this was developed and would be a trial program. So you would be, I think, the first to do it in this area.
But you're, so you're aware of it in some other area?
I'm not aware of it anyplace else.
So we might be first in the nation to do this? Possibly.
It's possible, I'm just not sure of that.
But possible. I just wanted to know if this was based on a program that had been modeled somewhere else with any success, if we, if we had, knew anything about it. So I mean, I'm guessing one of the problems that we're going to find is that people would be separated from their belongings, which oftentimes for these individuals can be a challenge. If they have a shopping basket or other collection of belongings, they don't want to leave them because then they can't be assured of the security of their things. So are they going to be allowed to transport items on the van, and what's the limit to that?
The storage question is a really good question. We haven't, we haven't fully fleshed out the storage issues. I think they will be able to take some things with them, but if you're running a full shopping cart full of storage, that may be prohibitive. We haven't gone down that route until we got some guidance from you all, but it's a very good question, and it needs to be explored.
Is drug use tolerated at this clubhouse?
I think it is not tolerated within the clubhouse, but I don't think that you have to be clean and sober to get onto the bus or the van.
Where is this, so the clubhouse is already being operated by?
Other nonprofits.
And they have capacity if we were to bring them?
That's what we understand, as we've been making this inquiry and trying to develop something to bring to you. They, this is the package that has been put together, so they would have capacity.
If I could just interject, it was through conversations. We actually spoke to providers, and we're just kind of trying to find out what they offer in the community. And then when we were trying to find out what to do with, during the daytime, you see a lot of, we were talking about panhandling and shopping carts and a jobs program, and how the jobs program we had looked into was over 400, 600,000 dollars. And, you know, it was just something we couldn't afford, but we really wanted to see what we could do to, to help people throughout the day, because they're just around. And then it was actually with those discussions, they said, well, have we thought about a van? We could take them to our club center, we can work. So it's actually something they thought of, and they, so, and they've indicated capacity to be able to do something like this. So it's, it's, it's the first of its kind from what we know of.
So do they have some kind of services there to help people if they want to, like, try and figure out how to get a job? Is that-
Yes, they have full wraparound services. Yeah, they have job placement, they have drug addiction, mental health services. It's like a navigation center. They have them in downtown. It's, they're called day centers or navigation centers, something where someone can come in who doesn't, who really wants to get off the streets but doesn't have shelter bed, but they can come in and get all the wraparound services they need, and then they can come back again tomorrow. They can come back again tomorrow. The goal is to make enough connections with these individuals to, to make them want to be able to get more services and more help, and if it's through family unification or any other devices. But the goal is to just really make someone feel comfortable, and the goal is also to get a paraprofessional, someone with pure lived experience, because that's really how you can make connections, is someone with a lived experience, and this would offer those services as well.
I'm not opposed to this idea. I'm a little skeptical. I also have some concerns about the, the safety of the driver, who would be presumably our city employee?
No, this would be all a nonprofit that would be running it, and it would be a person with lived experiences who actually works in the capacity.
So it might be creating a job for somebody that needs one? Okay. I'd be open to receiving more information about this. I'd like to learn more about it.
On the two here, the, you had the downtown, it said there's two programs that were mentioned, the Downtown Ambassador Program in Beverly Hills, and then the Downtown Streets Team that's successful in Northern California. Is, is that a similar?
The Downtown Streets Team is someone who, no, they both rely, they do not transport people, anyone. They're people that come in, connect with people who are homeless within the city, and then the Downtown Streets Team connects with them and then has them clean up the area, really kind of own ownership and a connection to the community, and encourages other people then to also come and work and do drop, cleanup. They get stipends and also food. That was the program that was over $400,000. And so it was a little costly for, for the budget that we have. The Ambassador Program is ran in Beverly Hills, it's also ran in Long Beach, a couple other cities. The one in Beverly Hills was, was high over 600 to 800,000 dollars, and they, more of a deterrent of telling people not to panhandle and kind of encouraging people to move along.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This idea is quite intriguing. Seven-passenger van doesn't seem like it's going to be the capacity we are hoping for the people who want the help, but I'm assuming if it's successful, we will add to it?
Yeah, so we actually, we looked into different vans, and we were looking at a seven, the, one of the providers said a seven-member van might be more cost-effective for us to start out with, because it would be more difficult for someone with lived experience to be able to get the driver's license to be able to run a higher-capacity 15-passenger van. So we would want to first try with a seven-member van, and then we can work up, and, you know, it would raise the cost, because again, we would really want to focus on someone with a lived experience, but that might be more difficult to get the C-class driver's license that is required.
What you might do, if you wanted to expand it, is you'd end up probably with two people. You'd need someone with a commercial license, if you're going to have like a 15-person van, which is what we were originally looking at, and then probably another person with lived experience who would also be in the van and working in the van. So the recommendation is to start at a smaller level and work our way up.
Right.
But it is possible to do a bigger van, you just need a commercial licensed driver.
And they could make several trips, I would think, too.
Yes, they can make more than one trip, certainly.
Right. Last thing, I mean, we could work our way up, depending on how successful the program is. And I would definitely want to see numbers on the success of the program. How many of the participants are placed? How many of them find housing, find jobs, et cetera? How many of them do we transition out of homelessness? So I think numbers are important. But also, where is this clubhouse?
So one of the things that we've been careful to do is to not identify specific providers, because as a government agency, if we get the direction to move forward with a program like this, part of it will be issuing a request for bids or proposals to find qualified providers. And maybe there is only one or two locally, but it's really not appropriate for us to say it's this agency, or this specific nonprofit in a certain town. But we have been talking to many in North County who have similar programs, and we're confident that there will be successful respondents to any type of request for bids or proposals.
The homeless people that you put in your van and take to your clubhouse, are you identifying any particular subset that you're going to be working with, or just anybody who wants to get on board and get help?
Right now, it's defined by geography. It's a particular area, but then it's anybody who wants, who is interested, and the hope is that they'll then tell friends, and it will expand out of that.
Okay, thank you.
And I wonder if they would go at night? Like, night seems to be one of the problems. If they would be, this place be open, this?
I, I think these places are daytime places. We will explore after hours, if you would like us to, but right now it's directed toward daytime, and they're day centers.
Because I see, we see a lot of them hang, hang around at night, so I would think that might be a good time to try that also. So, Deputy Mayor.
You know, as I think about $70,000, and I think about the conversations that I've been witness to, where social worker and sheriff's deputy and approach somebody who's homeless, the offers for help are almost always declined. I, I'm not sure that I'm liking the idea of being the first in the nation to try this idea out with this money. I, I think, you know, one of the things, if we only have 125 people in Vista who are chronically unhoused, what, what was the word we used to define that population? 122 unsheltered. Yeah, unsheltered. That means people living on the streets, basically. I could get to know 122 people real well. Why not hire a social worker that works for the city or works through the county? I mean, one of the problems we're sitting here arguing with ourselves in the community, we don't know these people. If I wanted to solve this problem, I would get to intimately know these people. I would build personal rapport and relationships with them. And I would think for $70,000, you could hire somebody, it might cost a little bit more than that, but not a whole lot more than that. And I would very much like to see somebody whose job it is to know each of these individuals and to understand the drivers of homelessness for each of them. Somebody who has had a conversation with each of them about their housing affordability issues, their mental health issues. Somebody who is expert in bringing these wraparound services to them. So instead of trying to bring the person to the service, I think bring the service to the person. I mean, have we considered that idea?
Yes, and we'll be bringing it back on November 12th. There isn't just one answer-
Sure.
-to dealing with this. So we will be bringing back information that includes a social worker with mental illness specialties. A number of North County cities use that service, and they've been using it successfully. There is some data on that. So we will be bringing them back, that back, on November 12th, when we discuss reducing homelessness. This is an app, an option that comes under the categories we're discussing today. And again, one social worker or one van isn't, we're not presenting it as it's going to solve the entire problem.
No, but we have a real lack of understanding of what the problem is. And I'd like to, we do spend a lot of money already on, you know, and maybe we need a classification system that's a little bit more defined. Somebody's already made it, to talk about the different groups of homeless, because, you know, there are some categories of drivers and circumstances, and there are some different communities within the homeless community, within our 425. And, and we need to be able to, you know, address each according to the particular drivers and particular needs. I might go for six months on a pilot on this with a real review of what's been achieved. I really want to know that the place we're taking them is the teach a man to fish place, or teach a woman to fish, and not the give them a fish. I want to know what kind of success they're going to have there. I'm real skeptical that people are actually going to get on the bus. And if I'm driving the bus, whose job is it to sell me on getting on the bus? Does the driver stop the bus, get out and say, you know, get on, and then, you know, they're going to go and talk to the next person? And, I mean, what is this model, and how far have we thought this through? I mean, again, I'm not opposed to it, but what I really want to see is, and I want to read the files of all 125 people. You can take their, their pictures and their names off, and you can anonymize it, but I want to get to know personally, as a council member, each of these 125 people by the questions that our social worker has asked them. And I want to see what we have accomplished as an organization, as a city, to understand the individual problems of each of these individuals. Because until we, as policymakers, understand the drivers and the real problems, then we can't really drill in and make solutions. And I don't think you've got a pulse on it, you don't, you don't, I don't. None of us have really got our finger on what are the individual drivers for each of these 125 chronically unsheltered people. That, to me, is the best use of this money, is I want to see a 10-page dossier on each individual, again, with no picture, no name, but they should, this caseworker, 125 people, I could visit with three, four, five, six, seven people in a day, you know, or, or I could spend a full day with everybody twice in a year. You know, and maybe we need two people, but one would be a good start if we have none. But we don't have the information on these folks to really understand how we can help them. And so we argue with, we argue past one another. Somebody says it's affordability, somebody says it's mental illness, somebody says it's drugs. We don't know. You know, we, all we know is what we go out and we observe. But where are the case files on the individuals who are living in our community? Who's got them? And if we don't have a case file on every person living in our community, then shame on us. And I don't just mean a police record. I mean, we should have a social work case file on every one of these individuals, and we should understand imminently what the drivers are for their situation. So that's what I want to see. So Mayor, for the-
So Mayor, for the historic downtown program, it appears that we have at least three that are supportive with some that are interested. So I think we have enough direction to move forward to the next subject item.
Okay. So moving forward with the next thing.
So in, in addition to the quality of life under it, we talked about and you asked us to come back with information on enhancing community outreach and education. And underneath that, listed as number one is data collection, which you all made very clear that you wanted more data collection and the city is moving, already moving in that direction and is already moving in the direction of having established in the last four months, a internal homeless task force, which is already meeting and taking away the pillaring of separate departments and putting all their information together so everybody knows what's going on and can help everybody else. So that's already started. Other ideas under that, and there may be more that you all suggest, are that we have a website devoted to homelessness, that we consider outreach to introduce the homeless master plan and provide training and resources to interested organizations, that we promote the access to the tenant landlord mediation on legal rights that Legal Aid has been already partnering with us on, and that we establish a campaign to provide venues for the public to better assist those experiencing homelessness. There may be other ideas that you all are thinking about and want us to look at, or some of these may be more appealing to you than others. So we'd love some feedback on this particular area.
Oh, well, I got a question for you. Data collection, I would prefer not to reinvent the wheel on data collection. Some other municipality or perhaps the county has already got programs. I would like to work within their infrastructure and I do not want to reinvent the systems and software and taxonomy and classification and all that. So let's make sure we're working effectively with our dollars when it comes to that. You know, I, I struggle with the, the legal aid issue. Are we already providing assistance, financial dollars to the City of Vista to legal aid?
Yes, we do. Through our Community Development Block grant, we have funding set aside for fair housing resources, which is basically becomes mostly landlord-tenant mediation.
So I'm in favor of upholding the rights of tenants 100%. I've been a tenant and I have asserted my rights under the law. California is very favorable to tenants. I've also am personally aware that the Legal Aid Society sometimes takes an anti-capitalist approach and they, they have absolutely taken landlords and filed endless motions and tied them up in court with no merit. So what I would like to know is, I would like to know of the motions they filed, how many they were ultimately successful in, I'd like to see some data on what they're doing. I'm not going to take your tax dollars and give it to lawyers if part of their strategy is to gum up the court system with motions that are not ultimately approved because they're, they don't have merit. I, I want to know that what we're doing to help people is righteous, that it honors the rights of landlords as well, because I can tell you there is a massive industry, and if you go down and ask the judges, and I have, I know a lot of them personally, our courts are really gummed up with incredible numbers of lawsuits being filed by Legal Aid. And so I, I don't know the answer to that. I am 100% certain that many of their suits and efforts are totally valid and we should support them. And I do support them. But I want some more information because I am aware that that mechanism is abused and so I, I have some questions about it that I'd like to have answered.
Oh, sorry. I do have Legal Aid's numbers for the first three quarters of, well, for, I'm sorry, the first three quarters of 2019. Legal Aid had 145 calls from the City of Vista residents. Out of those, 116 were tenant landlord issues, I'm sorry, 145 were tenant landlord issues. 116 were resolved via education advice or referral. 29 of those were actually done for fair housing violations and five of those were for alleged unsafe living conditions, which are going through the court systems.
But looking at it retrospectively, if we take a snapshot of a year and we go back maybe to 18 or 17, what kind of success? And one of the concerns I have is that one of their tactics is to file motions that are meritless, that delay evictions, which can tend to help a tenant and that's, but if it's a motion without merit, then it's a tax on our court system, it's a tax on landlords, and it's not ultimately beneficial to the tenant. And so I have a kind of a concern that they have been abusive at times. And I'm not saying it's the majority of their practice. What I'm saying is I don't know. I'd like to know how successful they are in the suits that they file.
Well, we, we can get some information, but that data indicates that the vast majority are resolved without going to court.
And that's good news. That's very good news. So what, all I'm saying is I need more information on that. And I'd like to know what the volume of calls is now and are we not able to meet that demand with the funds that we've already provided? So, I mean, is funding it more, is that going to fund capacity that is needed? What is the capacity now that we're paying for and what is the capacity that's being consumed and what is the negative or positive surplus of capacity?
We'll get some more information on it.
Well, and I just want to clarify, when we say promote access, we're not asking for us to increase the amount of funding to Legal Aid. What we're saying is we, we need to do a better job of promoting what services we offer people because we do get quite a lot of calls, so maybe better branding on our website or flyers provided. So kind of increase the, the access so people understand what services we're already paying for and what they have access to.
Councilmember Contreras.
You know, I'm, I'm curious how many of my colleagues have called Legal Aid? Have any of you called on behalf of a constituent or yourselves? Has anyone used it? Okay. So myself and councilmember Rigby seem to be the only ones that have utilized this service. And one of my concerns, this just happened last Tuesday, one of my concerns is, one, Legal Aid, you know, maybe they do amazing work. I'm not super familiar, but the concern that I have is when I went through the process and I called them on Tuesday, I had someone come into my office, I have open office hours every Tuesday from 7:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. And, and so a community member came and she just had a newborn, just was released from the hospital, could barely walk, and she's not documented. So I'm calling Legal Aid because I remember from the last council meeting, that was something that we said we had a service to help constituents that are having issues, tenant issues, and they couldn't help her because she's not documented. So from there, I, I had to make three more phone calls going down a phone tree and we still couldn't help her. So, you know, is there, is there something else that we can do to be able to capture more people that need help?
So speaking directly to our contract with Legal Aid, it's paid with, it's funded by a federal funding source and so there are restrictions on whether or not the assistance can go to assist people who are undocumented. There are other services out there and I do believe we were able to connect you this week with services, other, another nonprofit that can help with some mediation issues for, for any person. If the city council desired to use a different funding source to potentially expand our fair housing programs, then yes, that would be the answer. But based on the funding source that we have used for at least two decades to provide fair housing landlord-tenant mediation, it, it would be restricted to, to people who are documented.
Okay, I just wanted to make the council aware of this issue. You know, I don't know where people stand on being able to help everybody, but it's a significant issue because especially we're talking about a community that's already vulnerable. So just wanted to state that.
Okay, is that, do we have? Okay, is that, so that's the end?
So, can we just flip back to the, oops, can we just flip back to the other one? So basically, am I hearing that the ideas put up there as modified by the comments here particularly about more information on Legal Aid are ideas that are supported by the council and that we should move forward with? Yeah, I see, a thumbs up. Yes, okay. Thank you so much. So we've had some discussion about advocacy already.
The devil's in the details on, on that and what you're going to market and which programs you're going to endorse and support and I, we've got to see more on that.
On the prior page?
Yeah.
Okay.
You, you want to market for different services. I, I want to know how you're going to allocate it, how much you're going to spend, which services you're going to market. I, I want to see a full written proposal on that.
We'll come back with more detail, but if there was something you either wanted to add or eliminate, now would be the time. If not, we'll come back with more detail on each one of them.
Well, I've been advocating for about five years now that we work to eliminate panhandling by coming up with a joint fund, maybe it's organized by the nonprofit sector, maybe it's organized by the city, of the same charities that we select for CDBG support and where you could text, you know, to text help to 2222, whatever. And we put this on a sign in places where panhandlers tend to hang out. And we offer citizens who have good hearts and want to help people, a genuine way to help people by supporting Operation Hope and Solutions for Change and Lifeline and all the other good organizations that are really making a difference. Because in our hearts, we don't want to perpetuate the problems that these individuals are facing. We want to help them solve them. And I think that if we were to give people a viable means and say, you know, text, you know, this number to give $2 to help this fund. And if there was a great way that, you know, and maybe it texts back and say, you know, give $2 every month, text yes, you know, if, if, if yes. You know, I've said, I've set aside $50 out of my household budget, I have it on automatic draft to Operation Hope every month. And I said a long time ago, that's a small thing that we who enjoy housing in my family can do to give back. We should all, and we should help people, find a way to all give to the good charities that are doing good works on this issue, to recognize our good fortune and to share with others. We could help and we have huge litter problems on our off-ramps because of people that camp there during the day and they throw things down. That's part of the problem, it's not the all, all of the problem for litter. But that's something I've been asking for, for five years now and I've got no traction and it had to be on Caltrans property. But if we're going to spend money, then let's spend money to create an easy way, and it doesn't just have to be Vista. We can start something here in Vista, or maybe somebody's already thought of this. But imagine if you could give $2 or $5 or $3, you know, make it small enough that, whatever the amount is, it's a decent amount, but if we could make it easy for people to do something meaningful, you know, we could even do an automatic reply text with a website that shows them where that money's being invested. You know, there's some really cool things we could do with technology. And by the way, that might help us build our list of mobile telephone numbers for the city that we, the council has directed staff to invest in the ability to send text alerts. That's a conversation we had in months or years past about building, you know, an inventory of local resident cellphone numbers that's, could dovetail. So that's a good idea that's fallen by the wayside for far too long. We had to figure out how to make it so. We could put the signs up on the city property that's adjacent to the Caltrans property or we get permission from Caltrans to put those signs up. Just a thought for the marketing of these services.
Councilmember Green.
All right, real quick, I just wanted to comment on these enhanced community outreach and education aspects. I don't really understand a website devoted to homelessness, like when you come back with information, let me know really what that is. I mean, I don't see a bunch of homeless people surfing the web for solutions, so I don't want to spend a whole bunch of money on a great website. Maybe there could be a link on our website, homeless resources, as opposed to developing an entire website to that. The other thing that I wanted to just stress is when we talk about campaign to provide avenues for public assistance and those experiencing homelessness, I really think that 122 unsheltered number is a huge number. We talk about this homeless crisis that we have in our community and when you think of a community of over 100,000 people saying that we only have 122 unsheltered homeless, which, don't get me wrong, every life matters, but I'd say we're doing pretty good. And how can we address those 122? But to let the community know, hey, there's 122 chronic unsheltered homeless and this is how you can help. And maybe in conjunction with Deputy Mayor Franklin's, Franklin's texting thing is, hey, don't support panhandling, donate money to Vista Cares, text this number and then we can have a site squared away where when we find somebody panhandling in the city, we already have a fund set aside on how we can help them as opposed to randomly. So those two aspects, I just wanted to, number one, incorporate the information, the actual homelessness data, because that data I do think needs to be shared. And then the second thing is just what is a homelessness website? I have no clue.
To clarify, that, that was based on some of the comments from last time that we needed to put a lot of this information that we've been putting together, the information from the, the notes from the community meetings, the PowerPoints from the last few presentations into one place on our webpage. We wrote site here, we meant our webpage.
Okay, so just like a link, you can click on the site. Perfect. That was it, but yes, that was all I wanted.
Councilmember Franklin.
I think the, the reason that a, a list of at least links of service providers supported, because it's because if you know somebody who's, you know, then you can have a resource to go to. You know, and according to my earlier investigation on the internet, you know, it's $750 apiece, we could house all 122 of them for about $1,998,000. How much money are we going to spend on all this all put together?
For a month?
No, no, for the year.
Oh, for the year.
For the year. 122 people, $9,000 apiece for the year. So we just need to look at how these numbers work, you know? I mean, if we could house them all, I mean, we can, there's apartments, nice new complexes, $1,500, two-bedroom, we can rent up, you know, 75 apartments and house them all. I'm just, we need to think about how we're spending our money and what kind of result we're getting for it.
Okay.
What's our, what's our overall budget going to be on this?
We have $250,000 set aside from our Affordable Housing Fund, 350,000 from SB2, which is a total of 600,000. And then we do have CDBG funds, but we tend to spend that not all on homelessness. We do Boys and Girls Club, which is 150,000.
What about the quarter million we're going to get from the Assembly? Is that added on top of that or?
That's in addition, but again, that's only prevention services. And that's 250,000.
I would think paying for somebody's apartment would definitely present, prevent them from being homeless. So we're almost to a million dollars. I just want to point this out. I want people to think about it from different directions, okay? I just want to point that out. Yeah. I don't think it's an unimportant point at all.
Okay, so, yes. So we've, we've had some discussion about advocacy already and I, I know that we all know this is a complex problem without a single cause and without a single answer. But legislative outreach and advocacy can be devoted to causes and helping like job training or mental health services and the like. It can also deal with some of the things that have been mentioned here earlier on unintended consequences like AB 109 or Prop 47 and 57, which... consequences like AB 109 or Prop 47 and 57, which have ended up filling up jails and allowing people to be released early, putting many more people on the street than were anticipated. So, it can also move in that area. What they're finding is that of the last year arrested individuals, more than 50% of them state that they were homeless within the last year. So, we know this is impacting those in our jails and those on the streets. You have a legislative platform, which I know you're all aware of. So, whatever information we take today can be coordinated or lined with that platform or added to it when it comes back to you in January. And those are the directions that you may want to go in in terms of advocacy. I know there's been discussion about having more discussion with the county. You all are very active in that already and may feel that's sufficient at this point, but it can be at every level, county, state, or federal.
Ready for, ready for questions or speakers? Okay. Deputy Mayor.
I think we ought to form an alternative association to the League of Cities, which I do not believe has served our interest on lobbying for the overturn of 47 and 57 and AB 109. I think that we should form a, a, a public advocacy organization of, comprised of municipalities and townships who share our perspective and who believe that the legislature has been one of the greatest drivers of these problems by removing the tools like, for instance, Drug Court, that allowed judges to give, you know, sobriety as a, an alternative to jail. You know, I don't think it's something we ought to take up all by ourselves, because otherwise we'll look like Don Quixote fighting with windmills. We need to invest in reaching out to our, first, our neighbors. We go to next door to San Marcos and, you know, and, and find, you know, the cities in our, our five-city working group, and then go beyond there and find the cities that agree with us that these things need to be changed. I doubt that the, and maybe my colleague, Councilwoman Rigby, can speak, if she's aware of these issues at the League, she's our representative. I doubt we're in the majority amongst municipalities. I'm guessing the people in the council in the City of San Diego and Los Angeles and San Francisco are just peachy happy with the outcome of these heinously dumb laws. But we need an organization that represents our interest, not the interest of Los Angeles, San Francisco, and the City of San Diego. So, I, I think that's one of the first and most important things we could do is make a phone call to these other cities and ask them if they'd be willing to form an organization with us. I'd like to set a goal to have 100 cities participate. We know we're not alone. I'd start out with the list of cities that signed that amicus. I'd call them every one and say, we're in for 25,000 or 50,000. How much are you in for? Let's form an organization that's got some might and muscle together, and let's educate. You know, we're, we're not going to solve it by educating the legislature, because they just double and triple down on bad policy and bad law. We need to take this fight to the people. We need to educate the people we represent. We need the public to be angry that the legislature has, and the governor's, last governor and this governor, have made such heinously dumb laws to ruin our cities and ruin our state. We need to make them famous and hold them accountable, and we have an ability to do that, and we ought to do that. And, and you heard all these laws, and I hope you're going to come back with, and I've also, I've been asking for five years for a detailed brief on the things. I've said, what, give me three things that we need to fix. And I've got 47, 57, and AB 109 at the top of that list. But every time I say, why can't we, and what I hear back from the city administrative staff is, well, because of this law or that law. And I say, okay, well, then, give me the memorandum that's one and a half pages, because I was a legislative staffer. You can't bring 38 pages in. You've got to have one and a half pages. Let's write one and a half pages on each of these laws and why it's bad and what the impact is on our city, and let's find some people to go in with us. You know, we have not been, as a council, to Washington DC to lobby our congressman. Certainly, you, you know, I've had many conversations with our past member of Congress also, you know, and, and I know we're all setting up meetings right now with our current Assembly Woman, but we haven't been, and I've spoken to our, our Assemblywoman, I've spoken to our State Senator personally and do frequently, but we ought to go up there and speak with the other Assembly members and senators and make a real effort. But I don't want to do it as a field trip, or I, I don't, I don't need to take time to go to anywhere to, to see anybody unless it's going to make a difference. So, but I, I think that's what this organization, I like the Association of California Cities, and I'd be more than willing to pull our investment out of the League of Cities if they're not going to stand up for the things that are in the interest of a city like Vista. And if they don't stand up for our values, then let's pull. How much do we give them? And I know Mr. Johnson doesn't like this idea of pulling out of the League of Cities, but if they're not going to fight for us, then let's hire somebody who will. I think it's around 25,000.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We talk about Prop 47 and 57 and AB 109, and I, if I'm not mistaken, when AB 109 was going up the flagpole, we did write letters in opposition and send it to our representatives plus the authors and chairman of the committees, et cetera. They didn't care. They passed it anyway. Prop 47 and 57, those were our voter-approved propositions. It would take voter-approved repeals, get them on the ballot, repeal them. I don't know what the advocacy is that we could do for those particularly. I would have to ask that and of the, of our city manager, or our city attorney, what avenues we would have to take on the propositions. I do know, sitting on the Public Safety Committee for Sandag, those are frequent topics of discussion, AB 109 and both Prop 47, 57. And I know that there is an appetite out there to really tackle those three particularly because of the issues that they've created for the different cities. So, it would have to be an organized effort, and I don't know exactly the avenue that that would take, so I'm open to those discussions. It would have to be something big and something bold, because Sacramento doesn't listen. Sacramento doesn't care. I had meetings scheduled. I got up to Sacramento for my scheduled meetings, only to have them not show up to meet with me for our scheduled meetings. So, whatever advocacy we do, we have to be really big and bold and loud. And the League of Cities is good for that, but there have been times that they've been on the opposite side of what I would prefer. So, I'd, if you want to explore your, your option more, I'm not opposed to it. But with the, this is such a huge issue, and it's so complex, and it has so many different levels to it. And like I said before, it's all married together. It's like a big giant spider web. We have to come at it from different angles all at the same time. And it's something that we have to do. We owe it to the people who are on the streets. We can't leave our fellow citizens, our fellow human beings living on the streets. That's not a compassionate people to do that. And doing things that enable them to stay on the streets is not being a compassionate people. Being compassionate and helping them is getting them off the streets, getting them the resources that they need. So, when we talk about advocacy, I want to look at not just the legislative or the ballot box, things that have gone wrong that have helped cause this, but I want to talk about advocacy as well for getting money from the federal government, the state government, any government who wants to give us money for the resources that we need. We need to advocate for the reinstatement of our mental health facilities. A few years ago, California pretty much abolished or eliminated, annihilated perhaps, is a word someone else used once, our mental health programs throughout the state, and hence we have quite a few of our homeless population are challenged with mental health issues. So, the advocacy has to be on every different level, every different topic, every different reason, every different perhaps solution. I don't know that there is a particular one solution. So, I'm absolutely in favor of advocacy, but like I said, it has to be something that will get someone's attention and make them listen to us, because right now, they don't, they don't care. They're very, to me, they're very belligerent in their universe, and that's very frustrating for us. And I know we've talked about it, I've talked about it with, with staff, and, and so, if it takes us doing a field trip and spending our travel money going to DC or going to Sacramento en masse, I'm all in favor of that, because if we can get loud and in somebody's face and get some attention to it, I'm all for that.
Councilmember Contreras.
Does, does anyone know how much it, how much money it takes the League of Cities to function as an organization? Anyone have a ballpark figure?
We don't, but I'm sure that information can be made available as member agencies. We do have access to some of their, their operation expenditures, and they have a budget just like we do.
Hey, I'm just curious. I, I mean, I figure it'd be a lot of money, and I don't, I, I definitely want to push back on the idea that we can just create an organization to have an alternative platform. I just, I, I really don't want to see our money go to that, especially because some of these, you know, were voted in by Californians. So, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I also, I mean, everybody that represents us at different levels of government, they have, they don't just stay in Sacramento or in DC, so I, I don't know why we have to spend funds to go meet them there when they're currently here. But maybe we can coordinate some kind of, I, I don't know, maybe we need some ad hoc committees where we're able to work together as council members in parts of the council along with, you know, other individuals in the community and, you know, figure out how to, how to best pursue legislative outreach and advocacy. I don't, have we ever had any ad hoc committees that are working on this type of issue?
I don't think we've had ad hoc committees on legislative advocacy, but we have had different council ad hoc committees in the past.
I mean, that's something that I, I would be really in favor is, you know, creating an ad hoc committee where we can investigate this a little bit more, and we can bring forward some recommendations, but, you know, keeping in mind that I think we should include members of the community, and we definitely should communicate our concerns with the different levels of government representation that we have, you know, county, state, federal. I don't know, I don't know if it's possible for us to meet all at once with our representatives and what, I mean, does the Brown Act that would prohibit us doing that, right? So, we would have to have like a special meeting here where they would come to us?
If you wanted to meet together, oh, sorry.
Well, the, the Brown Act does allow meeting in other locations, but it still has to be a public meeting, noticed, et cetera. So, it's awkward, to say the least.
Yeah, so, you know, perhaps if we want to pursue this and we have some of our representatives, hopefully all of them, that want to come before the council, and we can have, you know, a discussion, a special workshop, special meeting, whatever we want to call it, I would be 100% in favor of that, because, you know, then we can, we can advocate for the different things that we've stated already, and I'm sure there's more that will come, come to mind in the future. So, that's something that I'm 100% behind if we want to do a special meeting like that. And I'm 100% behind an ad hoc committee as well. I just don't think it's, it's prudent of us to use our, our taxpayer money to create an alternative to the League of Cities. I just, I don't think we have enough money for that.
I'm sorry if I could.
Well, don't we do a legislative agenda and we, at our workshop and talk about what?
We do. We have a legislative platform that annually comes before the city council with recommendations from staff for changes each year. It's a, it's a fairly broad platform to allow staff to be able to quickly react to bills as they come up. But there are specifics that the council has asked for, and each year we do add potential core issues to focus on. So, homelessness obviously will be something that goes to that list. I did also want to just briefly mention something, as, since we are members of the League of California Cities, they have a much larger membership. All, say, 100% of the cities in the state are currently members, but what they, they also have a annual system of establishing core issues, high priorities, legislative priorities and platforms. And there are opportunities to, as a city individually, or as the San Diego Division, or as a, a group of cities, to bring forward to their annual conference a specific high priority that we may want the League to advocate for. And if we can garner the support of majority of the voters, you can have that item become a high priority of the League, and it costs you no more than your membership to make that advocacy. The San Diego Division recently took one just last week to the League regarding trans-border pollution, issues with the ocean. These are, these are ways to use the resource we already have that we can incorporate into the legislative advocacy portion of the strategic plan.
Councilmember Franklin.
As, the League of California Cities, approximately what portion of, I'm asking you to take a, a wild guess, because I know you don't know the answer. Approximately what portion of their mission or their budget do they use for advocacy of policy? Is that the core mission of the organization, as far as you're aware?
The core mission of the organization is to support local control, and that's very difficult when you are representing 486 distinct entities. They do.
So, it is at its core an advocacy organization?
It is. They do not, they do not advocate in a political action way directly through the League. They have a separate arm. They do employ, I believe, five lobbyists internally who take on specific issues.
Has the League taken a position opposing Prop 47?
I don't know.
Have they taken a position opposing Prop 57?
I don't know.
Have they taken a position opposing AB 109?
Yes. I believe so. We can, and we can look up this information. I don't.
Well, here's what I'm saying. If they're not forcefully advocating against all three of those pieces of legislation, then why are we a member of an advocacy organization that doesn't entirely advocate in favor of what we believe and what our values are?
Deputy Mayor, can I answer that for you?
Well, I, I'll, I'll yield to you in just a second. They may advocate for some things that we believe, and I'm not necessarily really saying, you know, not put our 25,000 in to the League of Cities, although I'd like to take a hard look at whether or not the policies they're advocating really are, you know, geared towards our values. And I'd rather put no dollars into an organization that doesn't stand up for what we believe or doesn't do it forcefully enough. And I'm not suggesting, I'm, I'm sure they have hundreds of millions of dollars at the League of Cities. I don't know, maybe it's 100 million, maybe it's 300, I don't know. I bet it's a lot. And I'm not suggesting that we're going to replace the organization with as much might or power as it has. What I am saying is, have we picked the phone up to other cities that think the way we think, that signed the amicus brief and asked them, hey, you guys want to work together to kill some of this bad policy? If the answer to that's no, then let's get busy. You know, we should be forming an organization, and it's not just about meeting with our State Senator or our representative, it's also about meeting with others from around the state. But frankly, as Councilwoman Rigby said, to be honest with you, they're not going to listen to us, they don't care what we have to say. We need a public education program. They care, to some degree, we, we think, about what the voters have to say. We need to educate the public, even if we start right here in our own community about, because some of our legislators support these policies. And we need to have a policy education program to inform citizens of what the effect of these policies are. And if the people of California voted. And if the people of California voted in 47 and 57, we need to make them aware of what some of the deficiencies of those ballot props were and make them aware of the need to, uh, to reform those pieces of legislation. That's communication with the public that we need to do. That's a public relation effort. Uh, so it might not just be hiring lobbyists to go and buy fancy dinners for members of the legislature because that's not going to do any good. We need to make them accountable for their bad policy. How can we do that? How is the League of Cities making the legislature accountable for their bad policy that's driving these problems? I bet if we were to call up Walmart and Target, they might want to give us some money to help us, uh, fix this thing that made $950 theft, uh, you know, they don't even, you know, I, I, I'm kind of informed that they don't even call anymore because of so many people running out with exactly 900 bucks worth of stuff that it's just like not even worth their time. Uh, we've normalized large scale shoplifting operations. We've normalized it. We've made it lawful because you can steal, what is it, is it $949? Is it 950 now? Under, isn't that part of 109?
I think it's close to 950.
Yeah, so you can steal $949 worth of stuff and get away with it and it's, uh, you know, there's no punishment effectively. So, you know, these are things we could go out and if we built a coalition and we've got Innovate 78, I don't really know what they do. I pretend that I do. I don't know what they do. Uh, they come in here with their fancy letterhead and they give a PowerPoint and, you know, that all sounds great, but I don't really know what they do. I'm not really sure what concrete, uh, you know. This could be an organization that's got a concrete mission of public education on this issue. We're not educating the people we represent and they have the power, the people have the power. So I'm sure Innovate 78 is great for the record, okay? And it's my fault, I don't know all the good works that they're doing, but I'm just saying, we invest here and there and everywhere, but where are we investing to fix these? Probably been, all of us wringing our hands and gnashing our teeth about them for years now and what meaningfully are we doing and is the League of Cities meaningfully working to change these policies?
Councilmember Rickby.
As the city's rep for the California League of Cities and the, for about five days now, the immediate past president for the mayor's and council members department, I am confident in the work that they do in advocating for the cities. I do know that when AB 109 was going through, they were strong opponents of it, getting cities, you know, circling the wagons with the cities. It didn't really do any good. They do have a side or I don't know the proper term, a city pack is the pack for them when they're dealing with, um, like ballot measures and things. And props 47 and 57, they were also opponents of that. The cities that come together at the League of Cities for these meetings, uh, the, the league staff hear, hear the concerns that the cities all share and very explicit why we have the concerns that we do. And the same with the recent bill that went through, um, that talked about police officers can't draw their weapon unless they go through all these different steps. Um, in fact, I was there at the committee in Sacramento, listening to a line of law enforcement officers talking about why that was bad policy. And the league was organized and that was bad policy and they did it anyway, they passed it anyway. I don't, I don't know if it got signed, but I know it got passed. So I'm confident in what the league does. Um, I don't think the league is where, where the floor falls out. I think that's in Sacramento in the legislature itself. Um, so I don't think trying to put together another League of Cities or another association of cities would be any more beneficial than what we have with the league. So, and, and as our assistant city manager pointed out, one of the cities, or I guess two or three of the cities here in San Diego, Coronado IB and, and San Diego, were having an issue with the, you know, border sewage and they put together a plan, they got the cities in San Diego on board, council members on board, they took it to the league, to the, uh, to the conference and asked them to vote on this as a priority legislative action. So that's how we get things through the league and we get the support of the league and hence you have the support of the 483 cities that we do stand together. And, and there was the, the cellular tower bill, I forget, 649 or something, um, they asked for people to come to Sacramento and show up on Capitol steps to protest, um, because the legislators weren't listening to us and we had over 600 elected officials from around the state show up. So there, there is cohesiveness, there is advocacy and they are effective. Um, it's just the legislators on the inside of the walls aren't always hearing us. So I, I would not be in favor of trying to duplicate the league. If there's something particular that you really, really, really want to get through, work with the league, work with our staff. And if I'm not mistaken, Ally, I mean, assistant city manager, you used to work with the league. So she's very familiar with how that process works and if there's something that you want to get 483, 482 other cities involved in on our side, that is completely doable. So I just wanted to address your concerns about the league.
Deputy Mayor, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm really, it's really not about the League of Cities and I, and I could see how you'd be confused to think what I'm saying is, it really has nothing to do with the League of Cities.
Yes, that you. Okay.
What I'm saying is hiring lobbyists, it's one thing to say you're against something, it's another thing to do something meaningful about it. As you said, the legislature's not listening to the League of Cities on this issue.
No, they're not listening to anybody.
Okay, fine. Then what I, what I have said repeatedly is, how are we taking our case to the highest authority in the state? The people? How are we working to make the voters of our community aware of the source of these bad policies? Have we done nothing to inform the public of, you know, people come at me all the time and they say, you ought to do something. And I say, well, you know, it's the state and the prop 47 and 57 and the 109 and the this, the that and the other. They don't know. They don't have any idea. And so here we are as a council, wanting desperately to fix the problem. Here are our sheriff's deputies wanting desperately to enforce the laws and solve the problems. And nobody has made the boss aware that we don't currently have the authority to solve these problems. The boss is the people. If you don't have the tools to do your job, shame on you as an employee for not going back and telling your boss, hey, you haven't given me the tools to do my job. We pay $24,000 a year for a lobbyist we have on retainer. So I'll shift my aggression away from the League of Cities and I'll shift it toward another, uh, stalking horse. We'll call this lobbyist that we pay. What are they doing for? They write us a newsletter once a week or something. Great. Let's spend 24 grand advertising, we'll do it on the internet, we'll send mail, we'll, uh, you know, we'll get one of those airplanes with the big waving flag behind it, you know? How are we making people aware of the bad policies that tie the hands of our deputy sheriffs and of our policymakers in this community? That's what I'm saying. Let's devote some resources to a public outreach campaign to make the owners of these bad policies famous for their bad work and their bad judgment and their bad policies. If we're going to tell our citizens that we can't solve these problems because of the state, then let's get real loud and real vocal and share with people exactly what needs to be done to fix it and exactly who's at fault for creating these policies, you know? That's what I'm saying. So I'm sure the league is a fine organization. I, I highly doubt that it has a, an ideological perspective that agrees with my own, uh, in total. I'm assuming that San Diego gets a few more votes in a weighted fashion than we do.
Actually, at the annual business meeting, everyone, every city gets one vote. They do pay more though.
Oh, well, that's interesting. Well, again, it's not about the league and I'm sorry I muddied the issue by bringing them into it. What I'm really saying is, why not form an advocacy organization that's not only a lobbying organization, that would be a very small part of it. The larger part would be to conduct a public education effort to tell people what's wrong with the state policies. We've all said it again and again and again, and every time we bring these issues up, our city attorney, our city manager, they all tell us how it's the state, the state this and the state that, and the, a couple of bad court decisions. Well, let's get after educating people on precisely what needs to be changed in order to solve these problems because people expect that their city council can solve these problems. And the reality is, we need some help from the state, so let's educate them.
We should really educate them before they vote.
From your lips to God's ears.
Okay. Do we have enough information on this subject, everybody?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to have Amanda wrap us up.
So just to recap on, um, which was mentioned earlier, um, on November 12th, we will be discussing reduction of homelessness. It will kind of tie together everything. I know it was kind of piecemealed with the subject matter, but because it is so vast, we wanted to kind of really understand. So next week, I'm sorry, next week, November 12th, we will be discussing, that's when we'll discuss the unsheltered population, discussing social workers and other avenues and we're looking forward to it.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, can I just say thank you, uh, to staff and to our expert here for the work that you're doing for us? It is very, very much appreciated and I want to thank you for being here.
You're going to go home exhausted.
I'll second that. Thanks for putting up with my hair on fire. I don't have much left.
Thank you.
But I got squarely on fire.
We appreciate all the input. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so next on our agenda, we have one more thing, the Paseo Santa Fe Phase Three Gateway Arch. And then we're going to have our Community Development and Engineering Director, John Conley, is going to provide his staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is regarding the Paseo Santa Fe Streetscape Improvement Project, CIP number 8291. The improvements extend along South Santa Fe from Main Street to Civic Center Drive, which is the area shown in the aerial photo on the right here. The project is split into three phases. Phase one, which runs from Main Street to about Ocean View Drive, which has been completed. Phase two, which runs from Ocean View to just past Terrace, which is under construction. And phase three, which extends from roughly south of Terrace to Civic Center Drive, which is in final design and we hope to bring forward to the council for funding later this year. When this project was originally planned for, there was a intent to put a gateway arch at both the north and south ends of the corridor to bookend the improvements. The existing arch is noted here at the top of the frame, it's right in front of the Sonic Burger near Main Street. And there is a proposed arch that would occur in phase three, just east of Pallavista Drive, uh, near the McDonald's restaurant. Uh, as I mentioned, the second gateway would be placed at the southerly end of the project. Uh, it was proposed to be identical to the existing arch sign and components. The cost is estimated at about $350,000 for the arch structure and signage, inclusive of all the components and lighting. And, uh, the staff is requesting input on inclusive, including that item in phase three. Uh, the staff's also interested in getting some input from the city council on the crown element, which is the small element on the top of the sign where the hummingbird and flower, um, are located. This is the existing sign, so the proposed sign would be identical in scale and signage with this sign. Uh, the crown element at the top, as I noted, is the current crown with the hummingbird and flower. There is an optional crown design that was presented by, uh, the staff as part of the original design, which is a sort of a sundial design that's included in the staff report and shown on the lower slide here. If the council's interested in switching out that crown motif to the original design, the staff can accomplish that, uh, quite easily, uh, and the cost estimate for that's about $6,000. Staff's also open to any other recommendations that the council may have related to the crown motif or the sign itself with respect to both the existing and the proposed arch. So staff is requesting direction tonight from the council on number one, the inclusion of an arch in phase three and number two, on the crown element design for both the existing and the proposed arch sign. That includes my staff report and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
I have a, one speaker I'm going to take first, which is Matt.
Uh, so what feels like about a year ago, um, we were talking about 28,000. Um, I know the, a lot of the council members made comments about, you know, not wanting to think the public was, or not, not, the public not thinking the council was, um, not prioritizing safety, uh, wasn't committed to it, you know, wasn't having a full conversation. And to be honest, I didn't think for a second that was the case, uh, but I look at this conversation about a crown and sort of a ceremonial whatever, and I'm like, this is your time. If you want to have those conversations about safety and transit, just ditch this for a second and have that conversation.
Thank you. Um, okay, so everybody's buttons are lit up, I, I'm, but I'll go first. I just want to tell you that, um, I'm, I'm okay with the arch because I think it delineates that whole neighborhood, that area of town. It creates an identity for that and I see it in lots of other cities. Bird's okay if anybody just wants to do the bird and change this to the bird, that's okay, but I, I want to, I think the same arch at both ends, it delineates that whole area and it, and it's becoming beautiful. Like put all those new trees in there, it's like a beautiful area. So I would be in support of that. So I'll just go first with that and next I'll turn it over to Councilmember Franklin.
I would make a motion that we strike the second arch and that we use a lesser portion of the $350,000 to entirely redesign the first arch to, uh, display primarily Vista or City of Vista. Perhaps even we could have a competition, uh, for the redesign, but I think, um, and I know as I'm in the minority at City Hall on this issue, but I think, uh, even tonight, you know, some of the members of the, participated in the Citizens Academy, uh, you know, asked me what we were thinking on this. I totally get where we were headed originally, but the civic pride that our residents have, they see Carlsbad has an arch, they see Encinitas has an arch and they look and they go, you know, these neighborhood, uh, arches are for like a big city like San Diego. And they, we're, Vista is our neighborhood, uh, you know, we're not big enough to have these, and we don't have our city arch first. So that's my motion is that we spend hopefully substantially less than $350,000 to retool the first arch, uh, and make it a Vista arch. And we could have a rider, like we added the rider that says Vista. We could have a rider that says Paseo Santa Fe. I think that'd be cool. Get rid of that existing rider that says Vista below, make it a little wider and make it say Paseo Santa Fe. We can still honor the Paseo Santa Fe corridor, uh, but I think the big, the biggest font on that sign should be Vista. Uh, I think our, our residents have told us pretty loudly for a long time now that that's what they want to see there. And, uh, you know, on, on issues like this, I'm going to give the people what they want kind of a guy. So that's my motion.
I second that. Councilmember Green.
All right. So as much as I have so much pride for Vista and when this sign was unveiled, I was actually in Costa Rica watching it live on Facebook. And when the, you're getting a Vista sign and the sheet came off, it was like all, yeah, that's not a Vista sign. And, uh, the, the community was upset about it and I actually was on the community's side on that as, hey, we had no input on it, we thought we were getting a Vista sign. And I think adding the Vista to the Paseo Santa Fe definitely helped the sign out. Um, I do think we should have a Vista sign in Vista, number one, first and foremost. I think when people get off the freeway in Vista, they should see that they're in Vista. However, I don't think that the Paseo Santa Fe corridor is the most practical spot to have an actual Vista sign. I think when you get off on Vista Village Drive and you're hanging right towards Hacienda to go to South Vista, or you're hanging left towards like the Canes and the, uh, you know, Ford dealership right there to go into North Vista, I think that's a more practical area to have a big Vista sign because anybody going to South Vista's going to get off on Vista Village and hit our traffic mess at Melrose, or they're going to hang right and hit our traffic mess at South Santa Fe and Vista Village. So I think if we want a big Vista sign and maybe one on each side of that big, uh, you know, I don't know. I don't know, off-ramp there, that would be a more practical spot for an actual citywide sign that everybody would be able to get joy of. Because a lot of people don't come to the north side of Vista over here, and they wouldn't see it unless they're making a trip over to the Paseo Santa Fe corridor. So I actually, as crazy as this may sound, am a fan of remaining on course with that Paseo Santa Fe corridor and keeping those three phases branded as Paseo Santa Fe. I do think that Vista has to be included in that new, you know, marquee per se. But I think having a little area, Paseo Santa Fe, that's different from the other areas, that has a different landscape, a different traffic pattern, kind of a slower cruise and different businesses, I think having a specific area in Vista that is branded differently is okay. That is our CDBID area. It's our Central Vista Business Improvement District. It is a special area, and I think branding especially isn't a bad thing. I just think you definitely have to incorporate Vista in it. For me personally, I'm not a fan of the flower next to the hummingbird. I like the hummingbird. I know that it's our bird, and I think the hummingbird is extremely distinguishable in that little area there. But I think the flower, it really is hard to distinguish that that's an actual flower. So my recommendation would be that we maintain the dual marquees on the end of our Paseo Santa Fe corridor, that we instruct staff to come up with some type of cost estimate, maybe look for grants and things on how we could get a city sign that actually benefits the city as a whole, as opposed to just being tucked away on the north side in this little pocket of Vista. But that's my recommendation, is for this particular Paseo Santa Fe gateway arch, I like the Paseo Santa Fe corridor. I like the changes I'm seeing. I like the slowdown in traffic, and I actually like that we're going to have a special little corridor there in Vista that we can kind of distinguish from the rest of the area. That's the Paseo Santa Fe area. Maybe some point in time, there will be a Shadow Ridge area where people hang out in 20, 30 years down the road. You know what I mean? But when we talk about Vista, I think that you should have a central location for that sign. I don't think it should be tucked away at the end of Civic Center Drive. I think that it should be prominently right when you get off an off-ramp. And I think the most practical place, in my opinion, is on Vista Village Drive because it is kind of the gateway per se to either the south side or the north side of our community. Everybody typically getting off in Vista, whether you're going to Shadow Ridge or North Vista, are going to get off at that particular off-ramp. So my take on it is that we stay the course, that we keep it Paseo Santa Fe. We do change both sides of the sign, that we remove the flower on both sides of the sign. I don't like the crown. It looks too much like a shell, and I do feel like we're not so much a beach city, so having a big shell on top of there isn't what I would like. But I see the vision of the council past, and I think remaining steadfast to that vision for this area, as long as we let our citizens know, we hear you loud and clear that you want a Vista sign. We want to put it somewhere that's prominent, that everybody who gets off and exit in Vista is going to see, and we want it to be amazing. I don't want to hijack a little bitty area that I have branded and say, hey, this is Vista. I think Vista's bigger than that, and that it'd be better and a more practical location. So as much as I would love to get my Vista signs right now, and I know the community wouldn't be mad at it either, I just don't think that's, in the long run, the legacy I leave, the practical best place for a big Vista gateway sign. So sorry to be so long-winded. Hopefully you got enough direction from me. Go with it, get rid of the flower, keep Vista, maybe make Vista bigger underneath Paseo Santa Fe, you know? I get it, but I like the Paseo Santa Fe corridor, and I want to attract business owners and businesses to that corridor specifically. I like it branded how it is. Thank you.
Can I have a substitute motion?
I would like to make a substitute motion that we keep both marquees on each side, we get rid of the flower, we add Vista to both sides, and that we direct staff to come up with a great idea for an amazing gateway arch sign in a practical spot in our city.
Councilmember Rigby. I would second that motion.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think in the discussion, when we talk about the community didn't have a say, the community actually did have a say. This was years and years ago when the city council at the time decided to do this. They held community meetings, town hall meetings, and they even put together a community task force committee type, well, they put together a community committee to talk about this, do the design, come back, and the city council voted on it, and they voted to do it, the bookending of it. So that was a council previous to us, and so a couple of years ago, when we did the budget for it, it came up again. So we did have those discussions. It just was a long time ago, and people don't remember it. So I just wanted to make sure that that was put out there, that there had been a process to this. The community had not been ignored, as we hear people say. I like the sign. I like the bird. I like the flower. I don't see what other people see. I'm disappointed that people's mind goes there. I said this when we had this discussion the last time. My issue with this sign has always been, in the community, we have another community that has, I think it's Shadow Ridge, they have signs bookending coming into Shadow Ridge that say, Shadow Ridge, a Vista community. My point with this sign, back when we had this discussion before, and I'll say it again, we should be consistent with our neighborhood signs. If we're going to have this be the sign that brings people into or informs them, informs them that they are in the community or the neighborhood of Paseo Santa Fe, I think it should still say, a Vista community. I think if we're going to have it in one area, it should be consistent through all of our neighborhoods in town. So that's what I said then, and I'd still like to see it say, a Vista community. The sunshine thing in the staff report, I didn't know where we were going with that, not a fan of it. I still like the bird and the flower, and I would hate to see them go. So I'm going to like probably be voting no on both of y'all's motions. Because I like the sign, and I think putting it on the other end. I do, however, and I think I said this before, I'll reiterate, we should have a welcome to Vista sign. We're over 100,000 people. We're a nice, big city. We're a beautiful city. We have become a destination city, and I think it's time we had a welcome to Vista sign. Not just the little ones that we have coming on the little rocks on Palomar or Hacienda, but a real sign, and I don't think this is the place to put it. This is not welcoming people into Vista. You're well inside of Vista by the time you get to this point. So I can agree to put it, a Vista Village or somewhere else, put a welcome to Vista sign there. But I still like this sign, and I'm happy to have it bookend the way we originally intended it to be. And I would just ask people to keep with the plan. This is what, we have, we had a general plan, we had this plan. It's taking time to get to the end of it, but I think if we stay the course, we will see how beautiful it will be. So I'm asking to stay the course.
Councilmember Contreras.
So, you know, one of the main goals of having a sign with, you know, some kind of geographic location, it's a lot of free advertisement when people do Instagram pictures and whatnot. And people just are not excited about taking a picture that says Paseo Santa Fe with Vista below that. So, and, you know, when we look at a practical place to put it, we always talk about Vista being a destination city, and we're creating the downtown for it to be a destination. So I 100% think that there should be an arch downtown that says Vista very prominently, where we can have a ton of people when they come downtown and they're, you know, going to a brewery, or they're going to the strawberry festival, and they're able to take a little selfie, or take a picture of other people. You know, if we put a Vista sign just anywhere else where there's nothing to do, people aren't going to take a bunch of selfies. I mean, like, when I'm, when I think about Carlsbad and where their sign is at, it's in the downtown. So I just, I don't, I'm not aware, and maybe this is just me not being aware, but I'm not aware of any signs for a city where they're not within an area that already provides entertainment and food and other services where a lot of people go. So I really see this as a great opportunity to flip what we currently see. I 100% agree with Deputy Mayor Franklin. I would like to see the Vista more prominent, and, you know, we can have the Paseo Santa Fe below it. Not a huge fan of the flower as well. There's, you know, a running joke about that. But I just, I think it's a great opportunity for us to actually get the right type of branding for the downtown. I mean, people want to take a picture with something that says Vista. I don't, if I take a picture, I'm not going to, you know, geo-tag Paseo Santa Fe. I'm going to put a location of Vista. So I think this is the most proper place where signage that has Vista in prominent form could be located.
Deputy Mayor.
I don't think, I mean, seriously, I don't think we have $350,000 times two to do another arch and then another, and we're going to have three arches? That's a lot of arches. I mean, I'm tempted to offer to meet you halfway by saying, let's ditch the second arch and just invest the 350 into the thing that you want to build. I don't think the location of this arch is a problem. I mean, we've put a lot of investment into this corridor, and I'm just saying, like, I think we could spend like less than 50K. I'm also down to cut the flower out. Just take the hummingbird, move it to the center a little bit, weld it back in place, wouldn't even need to cut a new one. All right? There's nothing wrong with it. Or maybe they could cut the flower again, and this time it looks a little bit more like a flower, a little bit less like the emoji. But I'm just saying, where the white letters that say Paseo Santa Fe, what if that said Vista? And then the rider beneath where it says Vista, what if that said Paseo Santa Fe? Or what if we did Paseo Santa Fe? How about this? What if we get rid of the hummingbird on top? We do Vista where it says Paseo Santa Fe, get rid of the crown, and we do a rider that's real decorative that says Paseo Santa Fe on top? I mean, Joe, I didn't want to, I didn't want to lay this card down right now, but I do have to point out, deciding vote for a sign for Vista is within your grasp right here. I mean, I didn't want to have to go there, but, you know, I mean, I'm guessing there's some people on your Facebook page that are up in arms right now. That's all I got to say.
Councilmember Green.
So, I do love Vista, and I do love Vista signs. I do love Paseo Santa Fe, and I love remaining branding Paseo Santa Fe. I don't want to say that I would approve it, but I'd be willing to look at it, as long as Paseo Santa Fe was still incorporated somewhere prominently and we got to, still branded as a Paseo Santa Fe corridor. I get it. I was hoping Vista would have been bigger too, when you unveiled the sign. I was like, let's go big Vista, a little Paseo Santa Fe. But that's not the way it was. I'd like to know what the cost difference is, okay? So if it's going to be like another $70,000 to change Paseo Santa Fe to say Vista, maybe my fiscally conservative homie might look at that and be like, oh, we could spend that money better. But I want a marquee sign on each end of this. I want to bookend the Paseo Santa Fe community. If that means that I have to have a big Paseo Santa Fe and a big Vista, I'm fine. A Vista a little bigger than a little Paseo Santa Fe, I'm fine, as long as we get rid of the flower, the hummingbird's in the middle, Vista's prominent, and Paseo Santa Fe is prominent. If there's a way to make them both prominent on the sign, go ahead. Is that direction, or is that not direction?
Yep, it is. I would just add that that isn't the gateway to our downtown. That isn't the gateway to Vista. This is Vista Village when you're coming in is where, that's why we did the really nice bridge over Vista Village. That was, you know, a special bridge that we did there to make that the gateway to coming into town. So if you want a Vista sign, that's where it is. This is not introducing Vista. This is going to have housing and some businesses, but it's not, it's not the, not actually the downtown. And so, and I think you'd, I think you need matching, I think they need to match the arches at both ends. You take Vista one end and Santa Fe the other way, or mishmash them together.
We would make them both match.
Well.
Even if we did big Vista and little Paseo Santa Fe.
That wasn't what I was hearing. I was hearing.
No, no. And I want to make sure that that's what we do, is that if we change the verbiage here, it would have to match on both sides. And I'd be fine with this, but, like I say, it's just got to match on both sides. They're bookings, they're matching.
We've got to create, create identity for this corridor. This corridor used to be trashy.
Yes.
I mean, that's not a nice word, but we had problems there. And so our whole idea was, you know, because I've been here a long time, our whole idea was to make this a nicer corridor and to change the identity and make it a, you know, a special place. Solana Beach has, what's their, they have a sign, what is theirs called? In Solana Beach, they have a corridor. What is it?
Seadros.
Seadros, yeah. They have Seadros District. So little towns have, have things like this. And so, I mean, and we're not that little a town anymore. So, anyway, so my thing is, my thing is, I, it's a lot of extra money to change all the wording, and I just think, you know, for, for past councils, I'm sticking with my past councils who all dreamed this. I mean, this arch was hard to come by because it was expensive and it took us a long time to get this. And past, several past councils wanted this. So this new council can change it if you want to, but I won't support you. So I'm going to stick with the old one. But I will, I would like, get rid of the flower, or not the flower, yeah, the flower. Get rid of the flower if you want to do that. And as far as putting a Vista community, that's a long, that's a long thing to put on there. So I wouldn't support that. But so, anyway, that's where I stand, you guys. So I don't know what kind of.
Mayor, I want to ask a question of Mr. Conley and Mr. Mayor, but to reface a sign like that with the Paseo Santa Fe, the Vista, the crown, and redo it in the nature that was suggested, are we looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000? $70,000? Keep going. $100,000?
Closer to $100,000 from our estimates from the Ford sign folks.
So to reface the existing sign in the manner that was discussed, it's about $100,000.
You would have to take the panel off both sides that says Paseo Santa Fe and put a new panel on there, and then we'd have to build a new cabinet below where the Vista is to have it say Paseo Santa Fe because it would have to be bigger. So the combination of those two factors is about 90 grand is the rough estimate we got from Ford signs.
So that in addition to a new sign would be about $450,000 roughly.
Correct.
Okay, so Councilmember Franklin, or Deputy Mayor Franklin, so you want to have something more to say? You've been so quiet tonight.
I know. Well, the issues that we had before us were pretty darn important, so sorry to take so much of your time. I mean, I was just, I was looking at the most fiscally conservative thing we could do was, $90,000, I don't know, I don't know how you get there, but, I mean, give me an arc welder and a plasma cutter, and I'll get this thing fixed up for about $1,000 bucks. I need a cherry picker, too.
You need more than that.
Yeah, I know, I know. Oh, yeah, I know the other thing I was going to ask. Have we ever thought about renaming the stretch of road between these two arches, Paseo Santa Fe? Without changing the numbering on the streets, obviously. But I don't know, is that something we'd be interested in looking at in the future? Yeah, from Santa Fe Avenue, just between the arches, the street signs would say, Paseo Santa Fe.
What do you want to change it to?
Paseo Santa Fe. Just a thought.
Can we just say no to that right now?
Well, you're putting up two giant arches that say Paseo Santa Fe. You don't want to name the street Paseo Santa Fe? Okay.
It's a historic street. I think Santa Fe has a story.
I mean, we got $700,000 worth of sign to say Paseo Santa Fe, but we aren't that proud of it. Okay, got it.
Okay, look at you guys. It's 9:01. Can we just move this along to?
What are we voting on?
There are two motions on the floor, I believe.
Substitute motion. So how do we do that?
Joe, what are we voting on?
Second on the substitute motion.
Yes, you have the substitute motion, so that took the place of the first motion. So.
What's the, could we read the motion back, please? What are we voting on?
So just to be clear, the motion that I made was that we have bookend signs matching on both sides. We leave Paseo Santa Fe with Vista underneath. I remove the flower and move the hummingbird to the middle. And that we direct staff to come up with what it would cost to put a gateway sign at the gateway of our community. That's the motion.
I love your motion. I second it.
Thank you.
For the second time.
For the second time, right. Oh, everyone, cast your votes, please. Let's see where this goes. It passed.
Wait, I only got two votes.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
I voted yes on that. My vote doesn't even count. I voted no. I voted yes. I didn't know we could have two votes.
Should we do that again?
How did that go?
Yeah, this, this...
Karina really liked that one.
Yeah, so, the president was right.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Okay, anyone opposed?
Did she have two votes all night long?
Yeah. Okay, the motion passes four to one. Thank you, guys. Woo. We are now, and do we have any oral communications? Oh, we do. Oh, my gosh. We have, okay, everyone, attention. We have five oral communications here. So, we're going to start with Leanna Cortez, and if the other two align up, oh, looks like Alvarado, does, I guess that's... Martha Alvarado is next. The next one is Dr. Matt Doyle, and the other two align up over here. Leanna, you're the first speaker.
Is she here?
Is Leanna here? Sorry, I wasn't looking. I guess she's not answering. So, okay, Martha Alvarado, followed by Dr. Matt Doyle, followed by Anna Cruz.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Martha Alvarado. I'm a trustee for Vista Unified. Tonight, I come here with a lot of sadness and grief. During the last month, within a span of three weeks, there have been three pedestrian crashes involving Vista students and their families. Two of those crashes occurred in the Santa Fe corridor, the most dangerous corridor in all of Vista for pedestrians. These crashes resulted in injuries to students and serious injuries to their mothers who jumped in the way to protect their children. The accident on California North resulted in a mother who requires physical therapy and two students who need social emotional therapy. The mother is unable to return to work. This accident on South Santa Fe and on East resulted in a mother who was in a coma. She requires two surgeries and a son with leg injuries. These pedestrian crashes have devastated these families physically, emotionally, and financially. I want to thank the city for what has been done so far. I'm grateful to council members, Contreras and Green for responding to my email. Within a couple of days, the city manager and a traffic engineer reached out to our district superintendent. In those conversations, the problem solving was discussed for the intersection on California and on Santa Fe. And it was discussed installing a signal, and I want to thank you all for voting for that tonight, to approve that signal on California. But I think more can be done. I would implore this council to consider the same solution for the signal on East and Santa Fe, because it is the second most problematic intersection in all of Vista. This would help improve the entire corridor, as it's had 77 bicycle and pedestrian crashes in the past 10 years. I'm thankful for those crossing guards who work those intersections, but they weren't there when the accidents occurred. I'm hoping that the city would consider increasing the timeframe for these crossing guards, maybe spending less on the arches and spending on crossing guards. These accidents occur because they occurred when they were not present. Another solution to mitigate these accidents is to introduce traffic calming measures, reduce the speed limits, enhance data-driven traffic enforcement, and prioritizing safety. I look forward to collaborating with all of you and making Vista safer for their families, for Vista students and their families. Thank you.
Dr. Doyle, followed by Anna Cruz, followed by Shiloh Strawbridge.
Good evening, council members, Honorable Mayor. I have two things I'd like to talk to you tonight about. The first and most important is that I was recently appointed superintendent to Vista Unified School District, and I wanted to let you know that I'm committed to working with you proactively to support all of our families and our students in Vista. So, I'm a resident of Vista of 27 years, and I'm a member of the Vista Unified family of 29 years. So, just, any questions you have or anything you'd like to talk with me about, I'll answer the phone immediately and we'll work together. Secondly, I want to echo one of our board members, Mrs. Alvarado's statement about, about safety. There's two really charges that Vista Unified has in our school district. The first charge, of course, is the education of our students, all of our students. But the second charge, and perhaps the most important, is to ensure the safety of all of our students. And I want to commend Patrick Johnson. I also want to commend Karina and Joe for your great, quick response. I called Patrick's office, and in less than eight hours, Patrick called me back. We had a great conversation. We're working proactively together. So again, I appreciate this, this council. I appreciate being a resident in Vista, and I think what happened this week with regard to your quick response is evidence that we work together in partnership to make sure all of our students and our families are safe. Thank you again.
Thank you, and congratulations. Anna Cruz, followed by Shiloh Strawbridge, followed by Matt.
Hi, my name is Anna. I'm a volunteer mom in a Bape school. So, the six year in this school, I never see any different on Santa Fe Street. Like a volunteer mom, I would like to see a different manner, manner to manage the traffic light in Santa Fe and Avenue and California Street. When I walk on Santa Fe Avenue and Bobear Street, through Santa Fe and California Street, I see how much we need a better traffic light system. I don't understand too much, but I think a good idea is when people need to cross the street, the traffic light needs to stop for cars. In the same way, when cars need to go, the people need to stop to cross the street. Two accidents in a month, I think need your attention, especially when it's both accidents, kids were involved. I know it's impossible for you attend a problem in every corner, but you have this community, and this community can help you to know what happened in every corner. And I know also it's difficult for people to work one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon in a corner close to the school. But I think if you put a little bit more money for the same person and pay her, pay her maybe like a four hour in a day, maybe we'd be, we'd be more easy to find the people. I know this detail because I'm a volunteer, and I hear an issue for the people working in the corner. Many people, they don't want to work because they said it's difficult for they to sustain a family to work one hour in the morning, one hour in the afternoon, because they can't find other job between, between this hour. And also, the most I'd like to, want to say is, I would like to, you need to be empathic. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Shiloh Strawbridge, followed by Matt.
Hello, council members, Mayor Ritter. I'd like to echo our, our partners at the Vista Unified School District leadership and board members, community members, and parents, to say that I am the proud parent of a child at Vista Academy of Visual and Performing Arts on Santa Fe Avenue, and the proud parent of a child at California Avenue, also off Santa Fe. Thank you so much for approving the $28,000 in funds tonight for the immediate improvement of pedestrian safety on Santa Fe Avenue and California Avenue. That's so important. It's a huge victory. I appreciate it. Thank you also for your attention to the long-term plan for pedestrian safety downtown. I understand there's a large pedestrian improvement project coming that will be rolled out for North Santa Fe and near town site in the coming years, and this all bodes well. Now, we need to keep building on this momentum to immediately improve pedestrian safety, to keep focused. On the Santa Fe corridor alone, hundreds of children and families are walking to and from California Avenue, Vista Academy of Visual and Performing Arts, Bobear Elementary School, our EES preschools, and Vista High every day. Two moms, just like me, were hit in crosswalks just days ago. One after pushing her child out of the way, taking the brunt herself. These moms are seriously injured, unable to work, unable to provide for their families. Two children, just like mine, were hit by a car as they crossed the street to school. They'll never forget that. They're lucky, they're alive to remember. These accidents are devastating for our families and our school community, and they are preventable. We know from the data that Santa Fe Avenue is the corridor with the most bicycle and pedestrian crashes in Vista, and we know how to make it better. Beyond that, we should want to make it better. We should want to encourage walking and walkability in our beautiful city. The city should prioritize this issue right now to create structural pedestrian improvements. As you can see, we have willing partners with our Vista Unified School District, our school board, our parents, and our community. No matter what district you're from, please make this a priority right now to improve pedestrian safety where we have the most need. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, definitely. I'm sorry to hear about those accidents. I have another community member just down the street on Eucalyptus. She walks her school to, she walks her kid to school at Beaumont, and just, I don't know if you're familiar with that area, but there's practically no sidewalks. So I don't know. I just kind of assume or picture her walking like, on the road with her kid, and always worried about something, you know, like that was just discussed happening with her. So definitely sad to hear those accidents. What I wanted to just sort of talk about was, I know the mayor kind of stepped in at one point and made a joke about it a little while ago, but Councilmember Franklin's behavior tonight, I found it to be loud, repetitive, uncivil, and hostile. I felt there was some bullying of the podium speaker, and a general sort of hijacking of the entire meeting. I myself am the, the last person to prevent Councilmember Franklin from expressing free speech of, of any kind, you know, at the council. So I say this for his own benefit, like, the goals that you want to accomplish are some of the same goals that a lot of people here wanted to accomplish. And I could tell for myself and those around me that you were sort of turning people further away from accomplishing those goals.
Okay, that is the end of our public speakers. And so the next thing, I'll do my comments, and then I'll go on down the line for everybody to comment. So first, first I want to wish happy birthday to Patrick. What a great way to spend your evening.
To him, thanks.
I think this is the best birthday ever.
There you go.
Yay. So that was good. He's much younger today. Okay, moving on. I want to thank you, the 160 volunteers who planted 236 trees at Bringle Terrace Park on Saturday, and around the city during the October 19th Arbor Day event. These volunteers are helping to make Vista a greener place, and it was great to see everybody out there. And it was so nice of the city to drill the holes first, so it made it easier to plant, because I was worried about that all the way driving there. I was thinking, oh my gosh, we're going to have to dig that hard ground, you know, and so it was very nice that they did that. And also, by, by the end of this year, they said we're going to have 500 trees planted in, around Vista. So, you know, in addition to these, we're going to end up with 500 trees, new trees planted. The county's hosting the Dia de los Muertos at Rancho Guajomi, Adobe County Park on the Saturday, October 26th, from 10 to 4. The event will host live music and kids activities, and the event link is on, the link is on our website calendar. And the city's new pickleball courts are open at Bringle Terrace Park and Thibodeau Park now, and they're free to the public, and they're located by the tennis courts. And on Saturday, this Saturday, the 26th, from 12 to 2, there's a free pickle, pickle, I can't say that tonight, pickleball clinic will be held at Thibodeau Park. It's over at Thibodeau, so all ages are welcome at that. And last, the city's hosting a trick or treat event for children at the Vista Civic Center here in the parking lot on Thursday, October 31st, from 4 to 6 p.m. The event is free, and details are online at cityofvista.com. And with that, that is all of my comments. I will move it on to Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy birthday, Patrick. And I just want to say thank you to everybody who came out today to talk to us, to listen to us, to bear witness to the way the process works. This is our only opportunity to talk about these things, and sometimes it's not always the most pristine process, you know, it gets, it gets interesting up here. But I want to say thank you for coming out, because it's so important that we hear from the community, that we hear from the people that we serve, and also that you come out and tell us what you want in the community. Thank you to staff. You guys do a great job, and you always make us look good, and I appreciate that very much.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
I just want to thank you all for listening to my loud and repetitive remarks. I know I've done something right tonight. And, you know, the issue that we addressed tonight was probably one of the most important issues that we've discussed in a very long time. It's about taking care of people in our community. It's about keeping our community clean. It's about doing the job that the people who elected us expect us to do. And, you know, if, if my exuberance is a vice, then I plead guilty. But I do appreciate you all giving it the time that it deserved. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
All right. I do appreciate the different personalities and approaches we all have to governing, and I think all of our different opinions and approaches are what makes us an amazing governing body. So, thank you for that. Last meeting, we were here late too, and I forgot to mention that I serve as the vice chair on the Regional Solid Waste Association, aka RISWA. If you ever want to come down to Fletcher Cove and check out a meeting, you are welcome to. But one of our goals was to increase household hazardous waste recycling in the city of Vista. And I am proud to report that we have increased by 14% our household hazardous waste recycling. So that is actually a huge thing. One thing you need to know is that we have a household hazardous waste facility here in Vista. We are the local one here for Vista. It's open every Saturday from 9 to 3. You can drop stuff off. However, you're like, man, I can't bring this, it's too big. Good news, we'll even come pick it up. So if you call 1-800-714-1195, you can make arrangements to have your household waste picked up. Items like paint, oil, pesticides, cleaners, TVs, batteries, and such. So, work on that, that's a big deal. Also, want to thank VUSD peeps, Board Trustee Vargas and Alvarado. I appreciate you guys showing up tonight and speaking. I also wanted to wish a happy half a century birthday to Patrick. It's a big deal. Half a century, man, you round up to 100 now. Also, Sprouts opened here in Vista, so for those of you who had been driving to Oceanside and wasting your hard-earned money in the city of Oceanside, good news. We will take your money here at Sprouts on Vista Way. And lastly, I was lucky enough to represent the city and stand aside, stand beside the Vista Unified School District at the 16th Annual Festival of the Arts. And I want to commend you guys on a fantastic job, and also thank you guys for understanding the importance of arts and education, and continuing to support that citywide. We do all serve the same community, and the fact that you guys concentrate so much on that, for me, as a little trumpet player who got a free trumpet from Lincoln Middle School in the sixth grade, thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Contreras.
I want to wish a happy birthday to Patrick as well. And unfortunately, I miss the Bon Jovi singing that happened, but I feel obligated to sing Las Mañanitas. And so, I'll just do the beginning. I don't know, that's probably not a tradition that you do every year, but it's something that, you know, I do every year when I, my family or myself, you know, turns another year old. So, estas son las mañanitas que cantaba el rey David. A los muchachos bonitos te los cantamos a ti. Happy birthday, that's all I have to say. Thank you, everybody, for staying. And, man, I should have brought my guitar. All right, that's it.
Very nice. City Mayor, what do you have to say now?
Thank you all for the birthday wishes, and thank you for the serenade, and thanks to the group in back that dressed in their morning clothes today, and gave me a hard time. I appreciate it. There's no better place that I'd want to be other than the council meeting on my birthday. To let you know, there is one fire burning in the county, and it is at Camp Pendleton. It is 85 acres or 80, 80-plus acres. It's about 35% contained. And that is good news, because about an hour ago, it was at 60 acres with 0% containment. So there's a lot of resources, significant resources battling that fire, so hopefully it'll continue to be contained. Two more items. One is National Prescription Drug Takeback Day is on Saturday, October 26th. So, great opportunity for the public to drop off their expired or unused prescriptions. And you can do this to the Vista Sheriff Station between 10 a.m. and 2 p.m. at the Vista Court Complex. I think it's 325 South Melrose. And then the last one is construction will begin on the installation of the new traffic signal at Bobear and Goodwin Drive intersection. This intersection was ranked number one on our signal priority list, and so construction will begin shortly, and it'll be done anticipated in the spring of 2020. And that is it. Thank you.
Okay. City Attorney, do you have any words of wisdom for us?
Very few of those, and I wished Patrick happy birthday this morning, so there'll be nothing further. Thank you.
How about a city clerk?
We want to wish happy birthday to Patrick again, even though he's already heard it from us.
And Claire, you too? Okay, second that. Okay, with that, it is 9:22, and we are adjourned.